All righty. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Kattati City Council meeting, the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, May 23, 2023. And with that, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Rivers.
Here.
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here. Thank you for that. And would all of you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all the resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. Are there any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the minutes for our May 9 meeting? Not seeing anyone raising their hand. Kevin, would you like to check with our audience?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you for that. Then I would be looking for a motion for the minutes from our regular meeting on May 9. Move to approve the minutes? A second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously. And thank you for that. We will move on next to the announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules. The meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving city of Kattati community lurks via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is our proclamations. And the first proclamation that I have is proclamation of the city of council of the city of Kattati declaring June 12 as Women's Veterans Day. And I believe we have some guests in our audience, so I will read the proclamation and then we'll ask if you'd like to add anything. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati declaring June 12 Women's Veterans Day. Whereas June 12, 1948 marked the date that women were officially allowed to serve as regular and permanent members of the armed forces in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and the Air Force. And whereas women have always played a unique role in the United States military history, overcoming obstacles to find ways to serve. And whereas despite history's sparse documentation, women have always answered the call to protect and defend our freedoms from as far back as the Civil War. And whereas it took decades for the restrictions placed on their service capacity to change, but eventually women were able to participate in the armed forces during peacetime. And whereas by 1970, women's role in the military expanded, finally allowing them to command roles in non-combat units. And whereas it was not until 2013 that women achieved full status in the military when they were granted the right to serve in direct ground combat roles. And whereas currently, there are approximately 145,000 women in the state of California who have served or are serving in the armed forces. And whereas we owe an inexpressible debt to our current and past servicewomen who have selflessly served so that many may live free. Their unquestioned loyalty and value will undoubtedly inspire future generations. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 23rd of May, 2023, by the City Council of the City of Kattati, that June 12, 2023 is declared Women Veterans Day in Kattati. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? You have your... Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Tricia Ammon, President of Military Women Across the Nation, Unit 77. I served in the first Gulf War in the Navy. And I, once I left, once I was honorably discharged, I then served in the United States Coast Guard Reserve.
Good evening. My name is Rose Noak. I served in the Air Force back in the Dark Ages. We were considered WAF. It was changed to Air Force after I left. I served during the first Cold War and early Vietnam.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Kate O'Hare Palmer, and I'm a Vietnam Vet. I was an Army nurse in Vietnam in '68, '69, operating room, emergency room. That affected me forever. Served in nursing for 33 years after I came home. I currently live in Petaluma. And I'm also the Women Veterans Chair for Vietnam Veterans of American National Level.
Thank you, ladies, so much for your service.
I'd like to share a little bit of history about women in the service. So women served with honor and valor in wars and conflicts throughout America's history. They played vital roles in the Revolutionary War, serving as soldiers, raising morale, and spying on the enemy. More than 400 women fought in the Union and Confederate armies during the Civil War. During World War I, women served as nurses, bilingual telephone operators, stenographers, and clerks. During World War II, hundreds of thousands of women served the war effort at home and abroad, performing jobs in intelligence, supply, medicine, communications, and administration. Women also flew military airplanes as couriers, test pilots, transporters, and anti-aircraft military trainers. The contributions of these women convinced President Truman and congressional leaders to pass the June 12, 1948 Women's Armed Services Act, granting women status in the U.S. military. Opportunities for women continue to increase during the Cold War era with the opening of the Reserve Officer Training Corps, Chaplain Corps, Civil Engineer Corps, and the Service Academies. By the 1990s, women commanded ships, directed bases, and flew jets for the U.S. military. In 1993, Congress repealed the combat exclusion law. That same year, we had our first female Secretary of the Air Force and the first woman to lead a U.S. military branch of the Department of Defense. In 2008, we had our military's first female four-star general. In 2010, the Navy announced submarine positions were opening to women for the first time. In 2014, we had the first woman to attain the rank of Admiral in the Navy's 238-year history. In 2015, two women were the first females to earn the prestigious black and gold Ranger tab of the U.S. Army. Women Veterans Day is a tribute to groundbreaking day, a groundbreaking day, when women were acknowledged as essential to the war efforts and could serve in the regular armed forces. Thank you.
No, thank you. Ladies are wonderful. Would you like a picture?
Sure.
Would you like that? We have our own personal photographer over here.
High-tech. Probably more high-tech.
Podium doesn't look so well on pictures.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
I don't have my card with me, but I would like a copy to send to our national newsletter.
Yeah, Kevin, you've been corresponding with Kevin, right?
We'll get that to him.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to our next proclamation. What about... Sure.
I just wanted to say thank you. My son is a U.S. Marine right now in North Carolina. This is very close to my heart, and I'm just thank you for everything you did and you're continuing to do now.
I also want to thank you for your service. Thank you for being here. You're an inspiration. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Then we will move on to our next proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month. And I will read that proclamation. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month. Whereas Kattati's LGBTQ plus lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, queer community is comprised of individuals, families, and allies who are an integral part of the fabric of our city and who demonstrate pride in and commitment to our city throughout the year by virtue of their contributions to its economy, culture, and quality of life. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community has much to celebrate in terms of business and professional achievements, artistic expression, political involvement, community activities, life-affirming family relationships, and our vital part of Sonoma County culture. And whereas the City of Kattati and the LGBTQ plus community of Sonoma County continue to support and encourage diversity in the workplace and throughout the community. And whereas the city is proud of its skilled, talented, and dedicated employees, including the LGBTQ plus community, who work tirelessly to provide service to the people of Kattati. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this 23rd of May, 2023, the City Council of the City of Kattati hereby celebrates the month of June, 2023, as Pride Month. And I believe we have no one here to accept this, correct? Okay, yes.
I just want to very quickly clarify. I think you meant transgender, not transsexual. Just want to make sure that's what it says.
It says transsexual.
Okay, so we might want to correct that.
We need to correct that, okay. We can have that corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just read what was in my script.
All good. Thank you. Easily correctable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. So then we will move on to approval of the final agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Okay, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wanting to speak on the approval of the final agenda? Seeing no one jump up or raise their hand. Kevin, could you please check with our Zoom audience?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you for that. Then I would be looking for a motion for the minutes from our regular meeting on May 9. Move to approve the minutes? A second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously. And thank you for that. We will move on next to the announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules. The meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving city of Kattati community lurks via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is our proclamations. And the first proclamation that I have is proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati declaring June 12 as Women's Veterans Day. And I believe we have some guests in our audience, so I will read the proclamation and then we'll ask if you'd like to add anything. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati declaring June 12 Women's Veterans Day. Whereas June 12, 1948 marked the date that women were officially allowed to serve as regular and permanent members of the armed forces in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and the Air Force. And whereas women have always played a unique role in the United States military history, overcoming obstacles to find ways to serve. And whereas despite history's sparse documentation, women have always answered the call to protect and defend our freedoms from as far back as the Civil War. And whereas it took decades for the restrictions placed on their service capacity to change, but eventually women were able to participate in the armed forces during peacetime. And whereas by 1970, women's role in the military expanded, finally allowing them to command roles in non-combat units. And whereas it was not until 2013 that women achieved full status in the military when they were granted the right to serve in direct ground combat roles. And whereas currently, there are approximately 145,000 women in the state of California who have served or are serving in the armed forces. And whereas we owe an inexpressible debt to our current and past servicewomen who have selflessly served so that many may live free. Their unquestioned loyalty and value will undoubtedly inspire future generations. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 23rd of May, 2023, by the City Council of the City of Kattati, that June 12, 2023 is declared Women Veterans Day in Kattati. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? You have your... Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Tricia Ammon, President of Military Women Across the Nation, Unit 77. I served in the first Gulf War in the Navy. And I, once I left, once I was honorably discharged, I then served in the United States Coast Guard Reserve.
Good evening. My name is Rose Noak. I served in the Air Force back in the Dark Ages. We were considered WAF. It was changed to Air Force after I left. I served during the first Cold War and early Vietnam.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Kate O'Hare Palmer, and I'm a Vietnam Vet. I was an Army nurse in Vietnam in '68, '69, operating room, emergency room. That affected me forever. Served in nursing for 33 years after I came home. I currently live in Petaluma. And I'm also the Women Veterans Chair for Vietnam Veterans of American National Level.
Thank you, ladies, so much for your service.
I'd like to share a little bit of history about women in the service. So women served with honor and valor in wars and conflicts throughout America's history. They played vital roles in the Revolutionary War, serving as soldiers, raising morale, and spying on the enemy. More than 400 women fought in the Union and Confederate armies during the Civil War. During World War I, women served as nurses, bilingual telephone operators, stenographers, and clerks. During World War II, hundreds of thousands of women served the war effort at home and abroad, performing jobs in intelligence, supply, medicine, communications, and administration. Women also flew military airplanes as couriers, test pilots, transporters, and anti-aircraft military trainers. The contributions of these women convinced President Truman and congressional leaders to pass the June 12, 1948 Women's Armed Services Act, granting women status in the U.S. military. Opportunities for women continue to increase during the Cold War era with the opening of the Reserve Officer Training Corps, Chaplain Corps, Civil Engineer Corps, and the Service Academies. By the 1990s, women commanded ships, directed bases, and flew jets for the U.S. military. In 1993, Congress repealed the combat exclusion law. That same year, we had our first female Secretary of the Air Force and the first woman to lead a U.S. military branch of the Department of Defense. In 2008, we had our military's first female four-star general. In 2010, the Navy announced submarine positions were opening to women for the first time. In 2014, we had the first woman to attain the rank of Admiral in the Navy's 238-year history. In 2015, two women were the first females to earn the prestigious black and gold Ranger tab of the U.S. Army. Women Veterans Day is a tribute to groundbreaking day, a groundbreaking day, when women were acknowledged as essential to the war efforts and could serve in the regular armed forces. Thank you.
No, thank you. Ladies are wonderful. Would you like a picture?
Sure.
Would you like that? We have our own personal photographer over here.
High-tech. Probably more high-tech.
Yes. Podium doesn't look so well on pictures.
All right, can I squeeze in a little bit? Perfect. All right, swivel.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
I don't have my card with me, but I would like a copy to send to our national newsletter.
Yeah, Kevin, you've been corresponding with Kevin, right?
We'll get that to him.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to our next proclamation. What about... Sure.
I just wanted to say thank you. My son is a U.S. Marine right now in North Carolina. This is very close to my heart, and I'm just thank you for everything you did and you're continuing to do now.
I also want to thank you for your service. Thank you for being here. You're an inspiration. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Then we will move on to our next proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month. And I will read that proclamation. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming the month of June is Pride Month. Whereas Kattati's LGBTQ plus lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, queer community is comprised of individuals, families, and allies who are an integral part of the fabric of our city and who demonstrate pride in and commitment to our city throughout the year by virtue of their contributions to its economy, culture, and quality of life. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community has much to celebrate in terms of business and professional achievements, artistic expression, political involvement, community activities, life-affirming family relationships, and our vital part of Sonoma County culture. And whereas the City of Kattati and the LGBTQ plus community of Sonoma County continue to support and encourage diversity in the workplace and throughout the community. And whereas the city is proud of its skilled, talented, and dedicated employees, including the LGBTQ plus community, who work tirelessly to provide service to the people of Kattati. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this 23rd of May, 2023, the City Council of the City of Kattati hereby celebrates the month of June, 2023, as Pride Month. And I believe we have no one here to accept this, correct? Okay, yes.
I just want to very quickly clarify. I think you meant transgender, not transsexual. Just want to make sure that's what it says.
It says transsexual.
Okay, so we might want to correct that.
We need to correct that, okay. We can have that corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just read what was in my script.
All good. Thank you. Easily correctable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. So then we will move on to approval of the final agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
Okay, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wanting to speak on the approval of the final agenda? Seeing no one jump up or raise their hand. Kevin, could you please check with our Zoom audience?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then we will move on to our next item, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will open this up for public comment for citizens' business and the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. I do have one comment card for item 9B on the consent calendar. I will be pulling that item from the consent calendar so that we can handle that separately. So you have the choice of either speaking now or waiting till we get a report on that. I will leave that up to you.
Hello, council. It's nice to meet you. First time. I used to have to do this, not have to do this. I used to do this as a matter of course for several, quite a few years before we were put on the consent calendar. And that was no longer the case. But this year, every year's different, it seems like, these days. And this is, well, I'm happy to be here to make our presentation. I'll try to, I have something to read. I will just read bits and parts of it because I have three minutes. First of all, I want to thank the City of Kattati for waiving fees the last few years as a result of the damages COVID has done to business. The generous break given to us by the city really helped us out. I also want to thank the City of Kattati for their role in the Kattati accordion festival receiving a full waiving of fees this year by recology. It cannot be overstated how important this is to the survival of our festival. Plus, on behalf of the Kattati accordion festival, I want to thank the city for using our event and their print promotions and having the patience for our annual cluster problem created, I guess, downtown every year. Tonight, I am here not only in the hopes of having our festival's fees reduced by 50%, but to ask that the city considers giving us a full waiver as they did every year from 1991 through 2007. 2008 was a great recession, and every city was having problems at that time. However, the city has recovered, and the reasons that it waived fees during that 17-year period have remained, and maybe they could be reconsidered. The issue of city fees is even more important at this juncture because it appears that giving us a 50% reduction this year would come with a promise to only ask for a 25% reduction the next two years and a full payment of over $6,000 in fees in 2026. It's crushing economic news for us in our formula, and it's part of the reason that I and board members are here tonight, just to see if maybe some mediation could take place. When it comes to fee waivers, I understand that there are some at City Hall who have said that why should taxpayer money benefit a festival that does so well that it turns out and turns around and donates over $20,000 right back to taxpayers, childrens, and their organizations? The answer to this is somewhat nuanced. We are dealing with a catch-22 here. If we don't get our annual package of fee waivers and kind donations and cash donations from sponsors, then we don't end up with the money to donate back to youth groups. If we don't have the ability to donate to the youth groups, we could end up with the lesser interest in the parents donating their time and energy to the festival. Without the 100 to 150 local volunteers who run our festival, we would then have to go further into the red by replacing them with paid labor. It's the interweaving of fee waivers, donations, ticket sales, donated labor, and donations to local youth groups makes us each, makes each facet rely on the other in order for our event to sustain itself. So as you see, it's, we're in a complicated situation when we, it looks like we don't need the money, but each year more than ever before because of rising costs, because especially ramifications of COVID. We need more money.
Mr. Gray, your time is over.
Okay. And that would be my presentation. And we have other people that can speak, and maybe they can, as, refer to the value of what the festival does for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Then we will, any citizens' business items? Anybody wanting to speak on? Okay, not seeing anyone. Kevin, would you check with the participants on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment for citizens' business or consent calendar items, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then we will move on to our next item, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will open this up for public comment for citizens' business and the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. I do have one comment card for item 9B on the consent calendar. I will be pulling that item from the consent calendar so that we can handle that separately. So you have the choice of either speaking now or waiting till we get a report on that. I will leave that up to you.
Hello, council. It's nice to meet you. First time. I used to have to do this, not have to do this. I used to do this as a matter of course for several, quite a few years before we were put on the consent calendar. And that was no longer the case. But this year, every year's different, it seems like, these days. And this is, well, I'm happy to be here to make our presentation. I'll try to, I have something to read.
Hello, Council. It's nice to meet you. First time. I used to have to do this, not have to do this, I used to do this as a matter of course for several, quite a few years before we were put on the consent calendar. And that was no longer the case, but this year, every year is different, it seems like, these days. And this is, well, I'm happy to be here to make our presentation. I'll try to, I have something to read. I will just read bits and parts of it because I have three minutes. First of all, I want to thank the city of Kattati for waiving fees the last few years as a result of the damages COVID has done to business. The generous break given to us by the city really helped us out. I also want to thank the city of Kattati for their role in the Kattati accordion festival receiving a full waiver in the fees this year by Recology. It cannot be overstated how important this is to the survival of our festival. Plus, on behalf of the Kattati accordion festival, I want to thank the city for using our event and their print promotions and having the patience for our annual cluster problem created downtown every year. Tonight, I am here not only in the hopes of having our festival's fees reduced by 50%, but to ask that the city considers giving us a full waiver as they did every year from 1991 through 2007. 2008 was a great recession, a recession, and every city was having problems at that time. However, the city has recovered, and the reasons that it waived fees during that 17-year period have remained, and maybe they could be reconsidered. The issue of city fees is even more important at this juncture because it appears that giving us a 50% reduction this year would come with a promise to only ask for a 25% reduction next two years and a full payment of over $6,000 in fees in 2026. It's crushing economic news for us in our formula, and it's part of the reason that I and board members are here tonight, just to see if maybe some mediation could take place. When it comes to fee waivers, I understand that there are some at City Hall who have said that, why should taxpayer money benefit a festival that does so well that it turns out and turns around and donates over $20,000 right back to taxpayers, childrens, and their organizations? The answer to this is somewhat nuanced. We are dealing with a catch-22 here. If we don't get our annual package of fee waivers, in-kind donations, and cash donations from sponsors, then we don't end up with the money to donate back to youth groups. If we don't have the ability to donate to the youth groups, we could end up with a lesser interest in the parents donating their time and energy to the festival. Without the 100 to 150 local volunteers who run our festival, we would then have to go further into the red by replacing them with paid labor. It's the interweaving of fee waivers, donations, ticket sales, donated labor, and donations to local youth groups makes us each, makes each facet rely on the other in order for our event to sustain itself. So as you see, it's, we're in a complicated situation when we, it looks like we don't need the money, but each year more than ever before because of rising costs, because especially ramifications of COVID.
Mr. Corry, your time is over.
Okay. And that would be my presentation. And we have other people that can speak, and maybe they can, as, refer to the value of what the festival does for the community.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Then we will, any citizens' business items? Anybody wanting to speak on? Okay. Not seeing anyone. Kevin, would you check with the participants on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment for citizens' business or consent calendar items, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay. Then I will close citizens' business both here and online and bring it back to the council. We have the consent calendar. I would like to pull item B so we can discuss it. And that would leave A, C, D, E, F, G, and H. So if anyone else want to pull anything from that? Not seeing anything. Then I would be looking for a motion on the consent calendar minus item B.
I move to approve the consent calendar minus item B.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any extensions? Then items A through H minus B have been approved unanimously, and we will look at doing item B now. So could we have a staff report on that?
Sure. You'd like a staff report?
Just a...
Yeah. Ashley will be doing the staff report on this.
Sure. Thank you. Sorry about that, Ashley.
Okay. So the annual accordion fest is proposed to be Sunday, August 17th. We know that it's been going on in Kattati for somewhere around 30 years, give or take what happened with COVID and the cancellation. The event...
Sorry, Ashley. Could you make sure you're speaking into the microphone when it's on?
Sorry. Can you hear me better now? Okay. The event coordinators are requesting use of La Plaza Park, including the bandstand with electricity and the right-of-way surrounding the park. So the closure of West Sierra La Plaza behind the park for the weekend of August 19th through August 20th. So it would be closed from Friday through Monday. And they have submitted everything they need in terms of application. We're still waiting on insurance, but that comes later. They are also requesting, did request a fee waiver. So just to get a heads up of what the event looks like, especially if you haven't, if you're not familiar with it, the street closes, West Sierra closes at 10:00 a.m. on Friday before the event, and the three streets, and they reopen on Saturday, Monday at 10:00 a.m. So they're closed for three and a half days, three days total. And then there's live music both days. So it's a multicultural event. Like Scott was saying, they have music all day from 9:45 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. that Saturday and Sunday. We have had this event for multiple years. They're not requesting any changes in the timing of the event or the street closures that they've had in the past. But just to kind of go over some of the financial considerations which have changed recently, we haven't charged them since 2019, and that was because when 2020 hit, we, the city waived all fees for events. So it was waived for 2020, or actually, they had canceled it 2020, and then it was waived in 2021. And last year, they were able to get their approval before we reenacted or reinstated the fees. So they haven't paid for it since 2019. What happened during that time was we also had a fee study, and we changed our fees for multiple different, for all our fees, really. So the street closures have, street closure fee has changed, and this was done when we did our fee study, and they're more, more appropriate to try to recover some of the costs that it takes to staff those types of, those types of tasks. So for the past several years, we've always, we've charged the accordion fest based on a estimate of how many staff hours, the time took to, to support the closing of the streets, noticing everybody, putting out the no parking signs, coming to council to get approvals. And that fee hadn't really changed in, at least in eight years since I've been here. So it's been the same the whole time. And it wasn't based on the actual park permit fees. It was just based on status quo. And so this year, we went to our actual fees to establish what the actual cost would be if we did the same thing that we do for any other park permit. And so that's where we got the dollar amounts here. We're looking at the street closure fees. We're looking at the park permit fee. We're looking at the application fee, which is there. And that's where the $5,412 comes from. That includes a $500 refundable deposit. The last year that we did charge, it was $2,600. So we're actually proposing to charge less this year because we are still requesting to give them a 50% fee waiver. So our park policy allows for permits of 50% fee waiver for nonprofit groups, which they are, that do not charge entry to an event, which they do charge. So because we know that they're still struggling to get back on the swing of things and that they do provide for the community, we did request to actually honor that 50% fee waiver anyway this year. But knowing that they have advance notice of the fees, we were proposing that, to trying to get out of that relying on the fee waiver, to lower that to a 25% fee waiver next year, and then have them pay the full fee of the permit costs in 2025. So that's where that kind of formula came from. The table two here explains the staff costs. We're not suggesting that they pay for that. We just want to show what the actual hard costs are of the event to put it on by our staff. So it takes an average of 40 hours of staff time. That's usually myself, police, and public works. And based on what we've, what the staff hour rate is, that's where we get that $6,897. So we're not proposing to charge anybody that fee. So in the notice, they did, Scott did say over $6,000. That wouldn't, that's not the expectation in 2026 unless we change our fees again, in which that's something that we would have to decide at that point. But, so that's the proposal for here is just to kind of get a more, it's more consistent with all of our other park fees and, and to show the actual cost that would be, rather than just an arbitrary number of a deposit amount that we would collect and probably not return, just give them the actual rate and then cut that in half by 50%, which is what we do for other nonprofits. And then we also are requesting to use one of the 10, or we are planned on using one of the 10 community events that is covered by our Recology contract. So that would cover, so they don't, wouldn't be required to pay anything for the Recology services. And so we're really just, we're requesting to approve the accordion festival in itself first, and then also the fee waiver of 50% this year. I think the question coming up is the 25% in the following year discount, and then the, or fee waiver, and then the full, having them pay full fees in 2026. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
I do have one question. So the fees that we charge are really only the ones in table one. So it's not that we charge the additive, which would be, by my map, $12,309.
Correct.
We only charge from table one.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted that clarity. Questions from the council? No? No questions? All right. Then I will open this up for public comment. I do have one speaker card. Ed Gelardi.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have volunteered for the Kattati accordion festival since 1991, first starting to help build stages, selling hot dogs and hamburgers with Thomas Page School, eventually helping to run the wine tent, and then working with Education Foundation with the ticket booths. I currently am one of five board members for the, excuse me, for the Kattati accordion festival, and my current role is I oversee the 70-plus vendors that we have at our event. I and nor, nor any of our board members receive any pay. We are strictly all volunteers. We have over 150 local citizens that volunteer for the four days of this event, from setting up on Friday to final cleanup on Monday. They do everything, and we're so appreciative for everything they do, from security to the ticket booths, to running the first aid station, the hospitality tent, to running the shuttle buses, to the off-site parking, cleaning restrooms, picking up trash, recycling trash. And this, the most dangerous of all the jobs, is the crossing guards on Old Red. Trust me, that's not a fun job to have. In turn, we have donated over half a million dollars since we started giving funds to these local organizations, which include Thomas Page Academy, Pen Grove PTA, the Education Foundation of Kattati Rona Park, Kattati Rona Park Co-op, and the Ranch of Kattati High School Music Boosters. These funds go to help with their enrichment programs, their outdoor education, art enrichment programs to purchase band instruments, uniforms, and help cover their costs for travel competitions. In the past, we've also given funds to Kattati 4H and to the Boy Scout Troop Number Four. We also raise funds for local scholarships for students that are taking accordion lessons to help offset those costs. Community support and our volunteers is what keeps this festival alive and enable us to give back to our community. No other nonprofit has brought so much national attention to Kattati, and yes, national attention, and has given back so much to our community. As reported in the Press Democrat, attendees come from as far away as New York, Chicago, and South Dakota to enjoy this festival. I personally had the pleasure of meeting a music teacher who comes out every year from New York. This is her annual vacation. We also have a number of attendees that come from outside the United States. In 2010, the Sonoma County Tourism Board used our ticket sale information to track our attendees and where they come from, not only from inside Sonoma County, but outside Sonoma County and outside California, and calculated that, this was in 2010, over $100,000 was added to the Kattati Rona Park communities, to their, the economy, which is just amazing. I don't think any other nonprofit even comes close to doing that. Ideally, waiving all fees to this event would be great. I'm a little...
Okay.
But I understand everyone faces rising costs. So I would really appreciate if we would just lock in a 50% reduction to our fees as acknowledgement for everything that we have done and given back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Neil?
Yes, good evening, Council. I would support that 50%. I think that the branding and just the basic feeling that it brings to Kattati is quite amazing. And when you look at the economic impact, I would hope that that could be put in any analysis there. So I would support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? I see Mr. Collin.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Great to be on this side of the dice. I don't have anything prepared, so I'll be really quite succinct. I've been involved with the festival since the beginning, and it's, it's actually almost a complete surprise as to how it really took off. But I got elected back in 1992, and within no time at all, actually, it took a while, I got involved in League California Cities, and I eventually ended up on the Board of Directors of the League California Cities, which is quite a feather in the cap of Kattati, for that to happen. So I did a number of years of PR work by handing out buttons and bumper stickers, and, and I actually, you know, they got the nudge, and they were, they were converts. And I had a lot of people from around the state coming to Kattati just because they wanted to see this event. Is that good for commerce? Is that good for the culture? Absolutely. This is a positive thing for the city of Kattati, and I know we're talking about money. And whenever you talk about money, that can be a very touchy situation. But I encourage you to make a decision that can continue to embrace our festival. That's an important part of it. Plus, what's very important here is that the demographic is changing. So I mean, once, you know, there were a few of our performers that ended up passing, that catered to the needs of the older folks, the Lawrence, Lawrence Welk, whatever, no one, Lawrence Welk. But, you know, our beloved Dick Contino really had a lot of fun entertaining many of those older folks. But now we have a whole new core of young people that are really excited about the accordion. So our, to the new council members, when you come out to see our festival, it's going to be a whole new genre of music, avant-garde, if you will. So anyway, that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to speak? No. Here we go. Dave, come on down.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. I moved to Kattati in 1992. I attended my first accordion festival. I stumbled onto it in 1992. I've attended every festival since. And golly, it was probably about 10 years ago. I started as a volunteer, then a board member. And here we are today, trying to ask that the festival continue as it has been. It's all about what Kattati, or what the festival does for Kattati. I think that if you ask people, have you heard of Kattati? One of the first things they will mention is the Kattati accordion festival, probably followed very quickly by music. The festival's integral to that. It's easy to go to the economics and the money that the festival brings into the community, but we also have to think of it as a mission of multiculturalism. We don't book a bunch of different kinds of accordion acts and genres as a clever idea or a whim. We've done it over the years because we've established the festival as a multicultural event that can help bring some segments of the community together through music. I think, you know, we are a international multicultural musical extravaganza. And that's not over-exaggerating it. I have friends that come, I have 10 to 15, sometimes more, friends that come from, out of the area, out of state, every year to the festival. I've met people from Germany, from Australia, from Asia that come to the festival. It means a lot to people. This isn't just about fees, though. We believe that people come away from the festival experiencing higher levels of joy and a great, great experience of just what Kattati is. We believe that the event is structured to make it so that people who might not have much of an interest in the accordion can still experience the excitement of working together in the community event. My kids couldn't believe I made them come to the accordion festival. They were pre-teens at that time. My daughter comes every year now, only for one day, but every year, and she loves it. My son is too cool. But we see that, that it is, over the years, it's been such a community event and part of Kattati. There's not anything else that Kattati, I think, is that well-known for that draws that many people consistently every year for two days. It raises the profile of the city not only locally or statewide, but as an international event. I think a good example of that is that the biggest accordion magazine in the world is located in France. A couple of years...
Dave, could we please...
Oh, I'm over. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was looking at the wrong one. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes. Lisa.
So like Richard, I have been volunteering since the beginning. And so I have a little different spin on this because my kids went to the local schools in Kattati, the co-op and Thomas Page Nursery, or Thomas Page School. So we got money from the accordion festival every year. So the nursery school started a little bit down the line, but Clifton Bauchman was so generous to have our school do the security, because they're the co-op moms, I convinced him, because we wanted to buy the school. And so as a nonprofit, we raised enough money for a couple of years to buy the school and keep it as a nursery school in Kattati. And that's really all due to the accordion festival. And then at Thomas Page, my kids really benefited from the music programs that they, the money went to, the music teacher that taught piano, we bought benches, we bought all kinds of things, sound systems. It really just was for all the music for the school. And so we couldn't have done that as a small little school in Kattati if it wasn't for the accordion festival. So the benefit for the kids in Kattati is just tremendous. And like I said, as Dave says, his kids were introduced as teenagers. My kids were introduced in the womb. And so they've been going to the Kattati festival all their lives and, you know, volunteering a little bit. But their dad and I volunteer every year, and we volunteer for whatever organization needs us. So I think it's just a wonderful thing for Kattati, and I appreciate that you'd taken consideration to, I would waive all the fees, but whatever you consider. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone in the audience. Could we go out to the Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. Okay. Then I will bring it back to the council. Any thoughts? Yes, Sylvia?
I just want to share that I would be in support of keeping it at 50%. Personally, I'm also involved with the Roselandstein with the Myo Festival. And I know with the pandemic, we've had difficulty kind of bringing it back on, online. We're currently working with the city Santa Rosa, and with their support, we're looking forward to having the event next year and moving forward. But I know the difficulty of volunteers and keeping it a cultural, multi-generational event for everybody. And I see the importance. I've gone to the accordion festival. I know it's important to Kattati. And I see that you've brought some multicultural events and artists in the past. So I appreciate that as well. So I would be in support of keeping it 50% as kind of a partnership with the accordion festival.
Okay. Did you?
Sure. I'll go next. Yeah, I find the arguments compelling. I think the accordion festival is a huge asset for the city. I, it feels, if we find the arguments compelling, I'd like us to think about the policy we wrote when we did the fee study, because it feels like we got it wrong. And so maybe that needs to be an agenda item then, because I'm not real happy making a lot of exceptions to policy. I'd rather get the policy right so that it applies as we want it to. So some of the things that I find compelling about the arguments are, so clearly, you know, a nonprofit host is important to me. And the fact that the proceeds that they generate are donated to local education and more generally, local nonprofit activities, especially those focused in Kattati, is an important criterion for me that makes it compelling. So I would support revisiting the policy as a future agenda item to address the ongoing, so approving the 50%, which is in the resolution for this year. I don't think the resolution this year needs any changing, but I would support putting the policy back on a future agenda so we could try to get the policy right so that we don't have to make exceptions every year. Thanks.
Okay. Go this way.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for being here. I've been a supporter of the festival attendee, and I just loaned my accordion to Kay.
Are you playing this year, Laura?
I'm no good, so no. But so thank, thank you for being here. I would be supportive of at least keeping it at 50% this year and next year as a minimum. I'd also like to just address the request to waive the fees altogether at 0%. And I think... address the request to waive the fees altogether at 0%. And I think there's a, you know, a strong argument that that would be worthwhile, but I would like to see, I wondered if there's any possibility to offer a reduced ticket price for Kattati residents, so that if the city's really subsidizing the cost to the city through our general fund, that the residents of Kattati could see a direct benefit from that. I'm wondering if that's something you'd be open to. But yeah, I'm open to keeping the fees at 50%. And I agree with Council Member Ford that we should revisit the policy to make it apply fairly to anybody who wants to have a festival if it meets similar criteria. Thank you.
I actually really like the idea of the Kattati residents paying less. I did look at the ticket prices. I remember, I've gone each year too and thoroughly enjoyed it, which is why I borrowed the accordion from Laura, and also play miserably. So no, I will not be playing at the festival.
You two can be a duet.
The horrendous council members or something. Yeah, no. But the one thing I did, I do really appreciate the, you know, that 15 and under get in free and that there's a senior discount. Like, I think that's really helpful because, and the price itself, I think, is really reasonable for everything that is included. I, it does sound a little bit like kind of, you know, we're not charging for everything we do, and then the money comes in and the money goes to these great organizations. It almost feels like, almost laundering is not the right word, but it's not, you know, it's not, it's kind of like there's a through there that I think might, could be really addressed with that resident idea. I presume it's too late to do it for this year, but perhaps when we look at this again for next year, that might be something we could consider so that we could at least keep the 50% if not lower it further.
Mayor, just-
Yes.
Just, this might, I mean, this may or may not be useful for the conversation, but another thing, another possible option, of course, we could always look at the policy again and see if we can find another way to slice it. But we're also, per the direction from the ad hoc in the council, we're also looking at a grant program as well. So that could be another way to approach it, so the council has discretion, and you don't have to come up with every possible permutation of event that would qualify for some sort of discount. So we could look at, we could look at, look at them both in that context, and we'll come back with something if the council wants us to do that.
Okay. I too have volunteered at the accordion festival for many more years than, than, than I can recall. I always enjoy it. I enjoy seeing both the residents as well as people from all over the world, as was pointed out. I do think that it is an important, one of the important events in our community, and I would like to see it happening. I do like the support that, you know, is given back to the community, and when that money is given to the community, it gets respent again in the community, which I think is, you know, circular, and that's an important aspect. So I agree with the comments that have been made. So what I would like to see happen is to, well, it sounds like we have concurrence with the current 50% for this year. Okay. Is that, is everybody in concurrence with that? Kay, I'm looking this way. Are you in concurrence with that for this year? Or?
So I just, they were asking for zero, and it, I got the impression they wouldn't. So it will still happen at 50, correct? Like, this is not, like, you cannot do it with 50. Can I get a clarification on that?
Would you like to make another recommendation?
No, no, I just want, I just want to hear from the people who are running it that if we do 50, it'll still happen.
Definitely will still happen.
Okay. Then, yes, I'm ready.
Okay. So Laura, are you, okay.
So what I'm hearing is the 50 for this year. We are not comfortable with the staff report that says then 25 and then full. We would like that revisited, is what I, what I heard. And we would like to consider working with the accordion festival group to see if we couldn't do something about a resident discount and also address our policy. I mean, maybe this can become also one of our, also city events, which also might give it a different, you know.
Yeah, we're also, yeah, we're also geared, you know, we've been working, so in our, in our waste, Scott mentioned this in his, in his comments, but we, under our franchise agreement, we are allowed 10 events per year that we can sponsor, that the city can sponsor. So that's one of the things, too, we've been, along with the grant program that we're working on, but also bringing those forward, too. So hopefully, at a single point in the year, like in the wintertime, we can bring all that forward before the council, and the council can, you know, proactively say, you know, I want a grant for these events, and I want, and we'll have an application period for it, right, and like a process. But also, also for garbage. So they, you know, they have basically free waste collection as one of our 10 designated events, but there should be a more formal process around it so that the council proactively makes those choices. So we're looking at a process to do all that as well, in addition to looking at, we'll look at the policy, too, to see if there's something there.
Okay. So with that, yes?
Just wanted to make one more comment, just to point out that at the, even at the 50% fee level, if, if we use the staff, the actual staff costs in table two, that's about a $4,500 contribution on the part of the city to the, to the event, plus the cost of waste removal, which we're covering through our franchise agreement waiver. So it's a pretty substantial investment on the part of the city in the festival, and I just want to make sure that's recognized.
Agreed. Yes, Laura?
Just a quick question for, oop, just a quick question for Kevin. I just want to make sure the letter that we all received, is that going to be posted so the public will have access to that?
Yes, there's a copy available in the back of the room, and it'll be added to the agenda either tonight or tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it sounds like we have concurrence on a few items here, so would someone like to put that in the form of a motion for us?
Well, I, I believe the resolution is all that's needed as a motion, because-
That's correct. I believe it just says that, it just pertains to the fee motion, or the fee waiver for this year. So I think that would meet your needs with the additional request that staff-
Right, we've given direction to staff to bring back future item already.
Yeah, I guess we already got that.
So-
And staff is shaking their head this way?
Knocking their heads. So I'd be happy to move a resolution approving the 2023 Annual Kattati Accordion Festival, authorizing temporary closure of certain streets, the use of amplified live entertainment, and the sales of alcoholic beverages in La Plaza Park.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Not seeing any? Then that passes unanimously. Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys on the off-season.
They have an off-season?
Well, we try. They have an off-season. We don't have an off-season. So the next item is direction on future agenda items. Whoops, it's time. Yes.
So I have two quick ones for the portion of the flag raising agenda item that does not address the Juneteenth flag raising and the flag raising ceremonies for both the LGBTQ+ and Juneteenth flag raising ceremonies. I'd like to, that to please, whichever part of that is not included, to please have that included for next time. And is that good?
Is that a, is that a proclamation for Juneteenth? Is that what's being requested?
And the flag raising ceremony for both.
I think that probably can be discussed in the process for any flags later in the-
Okay, great.
Right now, we don't have a process.
I, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So was my understanding, something had to be-
But the Juneteenth proclamation, we can, I can put that on for the future agenda item.
Okay, great.
That would be timely for the 13th of June.
Right.
Since the 19th.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then the other item is I would like to discuss the idea of term limits for city council members for three terms.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a bigger topic, so we should just talk about timing of that conversation if the council wants to do it.
Is that an item that-
Thank you.
Should be brought through during strategic planning?
I, I, you know, I would recommend at least it's a mid-year conversation rather than right now, because it's, it would be, it could be a, I mean, it could be a short conversation or it could be a really long conversation. It kind of depends what people's feelings are on that. So I, I mean, I would recommend that we don't just throw it into the year right now, but that we put it on the list of things to circle back to if the council wants to do that. So that would be, it would be brought up at mid-year to have a conversation about if we want to put that on.
When, when would mid-year be? Just clarify.
I mean, mid-year, January, yeah.
January? Okay, so we talk about it in January?
It would just be part of the conversation. Here's all the things that have come up that the council's asked us to look at. And do we want to do this, or do we want to do something else? It's a prioritization process.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So in the budget process, there was the lists of things that we had and the projects that we had. So at mid-year, we might take some off, we might put some on, we might, you know, say, oh, well, this is at the bottom we want, you know. So it's an opportunity to reevaluate that, the work that we've already asked to be done. That's what he's saying.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. All right. So where does that leave us at? That leaves us at our regular agenda item, and we have a little recognition going on here. First, we have recognition of the former planning commissioners, Mr. Hancock and Mrs. Moore, and we will, we have two resolutions. And do I read these resolutions? Can I read these resolutions?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have, we have, we have some dignitaries in the audience.
Okay, all right. And I got to make sure that I got the right one here, because I was given that-
Yeah, you notice that there's for Mr. Hancock, there is a newer version.
There was a newer version, so let me grab that. Get organized here.
He's accomplished something more since Thursday?
Apparently.
Got to keep up with both of them, yeah.
All right, got it. All right. I just wanted to make sure I had the right one. So we will start with our first resolution, resolution of the city, the council of the City of Kattati recognizing and thanking Neil Hancock for over 17 years of service on the former design review committee and Kattati Planning Commission. Whereas Neil Hancock has thoughtfully and consistently served the City of Kattati through over 17 years of public service, both as a private citizen and a member of the Design Review Committee and Planning Commission, and whereas Neil was appointed to the Design Review Committee in 2005 by Mayor Lisa Moore, and in 2008, appointed and reappointed to the Planning Commission by three successive council members, Robert Coleman, John Delasso, and Ben Ford, and whereas Neil tirelessly championed the rights of all of Kattati citizens, especially advocating for the safety of bicyclists and walkers, and for the importance and benefits of improved bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and connectivity, riding his bicycle or walking to planning commission meetings, and encouraging anyone he could interest in a bike ride or walk to ground truth existing conditions. And whereas Neil diligently advocated for water quality issues, including on behalf of those winged, scaled, and microscopic aquatic critters unable to speak for themselves and with whom we all share our waterways. And whereas frequently accompanied by his life partner Jenny Blaker, Neil habitually chose to volunteer both his Monday and Tuesday evenings, taking time to attend city council meetings, often highlighting to the city council and staff opportunities to advance sustainable and climate-friendly policies and practices. And whereas Neil took every opportunity to continue to educate himself on planning and land use issues, for example, regularly attending the annual planning commissioner conferences at Sonoma State University, and whereas Neil and Jenny consistently walk the talk, pushing the city to implement sustainability elements into all of the city's business activities, making daily decisions to reduce their own climate footprint, and even constructing the first fully permitted straw bale building in Kattati. And whereas it is determined that based upon the public testimony and staff analysis that the resignation of Neil Hancock from public service can never truly be accepted, and his participation in civic functions will forever be welcome and appreciated. And whereas the city council further finds that the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Kattati have truly benefited from the efforts of Neil Hancock. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Kattati finds as follows, that the council does hereby find that the many years of dedicated service is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan which Neil Hancock helped craft, that the above recitals are true and correct and constitute only a part of the findings made by the city council to thank Neil Hancock for his years of public service, that the community of Kattati owes Neil Hancock a debt of gratitude for his consistent efforts to make, help make Kattati a wonderful place to call home. It is hereby certified that the foregoing resolution was duly adopted at a regular meeting of the city council of the City of Kattati held on May 23, 2023, following the vote. So that's the first one. Wait, I'm, I'm having to read a lot tonight. This is really not fair. Okay. Next, we have a resolution of the city council of the City of Kattati recognizing and thanking, oops, that's, where did it go? Here it goes. Oh, sorry. City recognizing and thanking Lisa Moore for 32 years of service on the Kattati Community and Environment Commission, Planning Commission, and the Kattati City Council. Whereas Lisa Moore has tirelessly served the City of Kattati since 1990 as a private citizen, a parent, a member of the former Community and Environment Commission, planning commissioner, member of the city council, as well as the mayor, including putting up with John Moore, and also an elected city council member and mayor. And whereas through all of this service, Lisa managed to also work full-time, often bringing her professional experience and perspective to help inform her public service. And whereas Lisa was never shy about sharing her opinions to improve the city, even if it was contrary to certain other council member who lived in the same household. And whereas Lisa was diligent in ensuring all private development projects had thoughtfully located adequate solid waste management facilities in their project design, whether the project applicants had planned for it or not. And whereas it is determined that based upon public testimony and staff analysis that the resignation of Lisa Moore from public service can only be accepted if she promotes positive and influential stories about being an elected and appointed official in local government to her children and grandchildren, setting the stage for future Moore family participation in local government. And whereas the city council further finds that the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Kattati have truly benefited from the efforts of Lisa Moore. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Kattati finds as follows, that the council does hereby find that over three decades of public service is consistent with the goals and policies of the Kattati General Plan, the downtown specific plan, and many other city plans because Lisa helped craft them all. That the above recitals are true and correct and constitute only a small part of the findings made by the city council in recognizing Lisa Moore for her years of public service, that the City of Kattati owes Lisa Moore a debt of gratitude for helping to make Kattati a wonderful community to live and work in. Lisa Moore has served the City of Kattati since 1990.
That's the staff report.
Oh, well, where is? Thank you. This is what happens when you double side all these things. It is hereby certified that the foregoing resolution was duly adopted at a regular meeting of the city council of the City of Kattati held on May 23, 2023, by the following vote. So, Lisa and Neil, would you have any words of wisdom for us? I'd offer you the podium.
Well, thank you very much. That was some very kind words there. I would say the, what's common between water issues and cycling issues is the blacktop.
Well, thank you very much. That was some very kind words there. I would say the, what's common between water issues and cycling issues is the blacktop or the hardscapes that all the water and the people use and shed off that. The one story that really comes up for me is the time that, well, and we have open government, so it's very nice to be able to see what's happening in different layers. But when the Highway 101 was being widened, we had this extra blacktop that was being placed up there, and Caltrans had a requirement to mitigate for it. So Caltrans mitigated in Santa Rosa Fairgrounds. Well, the water coming down on that two acres on the, the grade, the Kattati grade, came down in Water Street, whipped around the corner on West Sierra Avenue, and started undercutting. It cost the city $160,000 to be able to repair that damage in there. So it, it, I get curious about just walking the streets and seeing what's going on. So it's great to be part of it, and thank you very much.
Oh, Lisa. Did you think you were going to get off that easy?
Well, Mayor Harvey and council, thank you so much for the resolution. It's been a labor of love. And so, you know, we're a family that volunteers and steps up to the plate, as the case might be. You know, I'm hoping that my kids eventually will not be so burnt out that they decide to do some kind of service to their communities. But I, I, I do have one story, like Neil, that when I was on Planning Commission, this is a long time ago, we were building the houses by a master plan by the vets, and one developer said to me, you'll never get any kind of open space in here. And I said, watch me. And so we have some lovely open space by cohousing, and it's wetlands, and it's wetlands on site. And so I always feel that when I'm, when people are challenged or things like that, even on council or planning, that when it's in your heart and you feel very strongly about it, that you should really advocate for it. So not all buildings that I'm proud of, that I've worked on and think, but most of the projects that I've worked on in general plan and zoning and all that, I'm proud to, to say that I hopefully had some kind of, you know, some kind of positive effect on that. So thank you again.
Thank you. Now you guys. Don't run out. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anybody jump up. Would you check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. And we have a hand from John.
I wonder which John that is, who that might be.
John, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think you'll have to guess on that one, Mayor Harvey. I just want to say thanks to both Neil and Lisa for the sacrifices they've made for the community. I think overall, it's been positive and a, a, a great asset to the community. And just thankful for their service. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right, then I will bring it back. Council, anybody have any words? Yes, Ben?
Well, I had the great honor of serving on Planning Commission for nine years with both Neil and Lisa, and, and I started to feel after eight years on Planning Commission, well, I've sort of like done my duty. And then I looked in both directions. No, not really. So their years of service are just astounding. And like the resolutions say, you know, Neil is a consistent voice for bike and ped and water quality issues and just keeps the, keeps that in our focus all the time. Lisa was my favorite Planning Commission chair, and I'm including myself in that sort of mix there. She was the best Planning Commission chair for both, both of her rounds while I was on commission. She always sort of had the big picture, having been a mayor and been on council. She sort of knew everything and everyone. It astounded me. Everybody who walked in, she'd call him by first name. They'd come up. We'd have a friendly conversation. It was great. And Lisa was completing college during that time as well. So she was working, she was on Planning Commission, she was completing college, and it was always great for me to hear her updates on all that was going. So it was a great honor to serve with you both. I, I, I don't know if you noticed, but I doubled Neil's pay when I reappointed him to the Planning Commission. So you all have a high bar to meet there. So thank you so much for the honor of, of serving on Planning Commission together.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to thank both of you for your many years of service. And I can speak to the veracity of the whereas about getting anyone he could interest into doing a ground-truth walk, having participated in several of those. And I always appreciate them. And I think it speaks so well of both of you that when you came up to the podium, you have, we need to talk about Caltrans mitigation. You know, we have, we have specific, specific knowledge and wisdom to share in every, every chance that you get. And I'm, I'm certain that that's not going to end with this goodbye tonight, I hope. All right, thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to you both as well. Neil and Jenny in particular, you know, took my wife and I on one of those lovely walks and showed us all Laguna de Santa Rosa. It was beautiful and very informative, and I learned a ton. And I understand you're retiring officially from public service, but for both of you, you know, sort of building on what Laura said, absolutely. I, I hope we hear from you whenever anything comes up that you feel like could benefit us knowing. Please don't hesitate. I'm very interested to hear what you have to say and what your experience has brought. So thank you very much.
And I also want to thank both of you. I also served on the Planning Commission with the both of you, and I just learned so much from Lisa and from Neil. And Neil and Jenny, I appreciate the walks that we've had, and I hope we continue to go on walks and learn more. Because I've learned so much about native plants and the water and the Laguna and just everything. So I hope we continue to go on walks soon. Thank you very much.
So Neil, I too have appreciated many of the walks. I'm the kind of person that I need to see it. Looking at it on a flat piece of paper just doesn't do it for me. And so I really appreciate the many times that, that I've been out with you and Jenny to actually see things because it puts it in a, in a very different perspective. We will miss you on the Planning Commission. We do miss you on the Planning Commission. But we understand that, you know, sometimes people need to go on with their lives and do other things. So I know that you will not be far, and you will continue to chime in. Lisa, my goodness, it seems like it's been forever. When I, when I saw that over thirty years, I knew it'd been a long time, but it really has been a long time. So appreciate all you've done. I appreciate you being my Planning Commissioner for so many years. I absolutely understand, having a grandbaby, that that is really where your focus needs to be right now in your, your next chapter. I've really looked up to you since you were on the Planning Commission and on the city council and a prior mayor and all that. And I've learned a lot from you, and I hope that you and your family stay involved. So thank you both for your many years of service. So with that, I'd be kind of looking for a motion.
I'm happy to move a resolution recognizing and thanking Lisa Moore for thirty-two years of service on the Kattati Community and Environment Commission, Planning Commission, and the Kattati City Council.
We're going to do them one at a time? Okay. Do we have a second? Second? All right. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. And could we get a second motion?
Sir, I'll make that one too. I'm happy to move a resolution recognizing and thanking Neil Hancock for over seventeen years of service on the former Design Review Committee and Kattati Planning Commission.
I want to second that. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that also passes unanimously. And with that, I think we would like a photo op with our ex-planning commissioners. Yeah, you're front and center.
Same pay rate, same pay rate.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it. All righty, well, thank you. And I suppose the two of you can be excused if you would like? Yes, she, all right. Then we will be moving on to our next item, which is the presentation on designs for accessory dwelling units, AKA ADUs. And I'm guessing that that may be Autumn, since she's jumped into the chair over there.
Good evening, Mayor Harvey, members of council.
Oh, whoops. Okay, good evening. Okay, so the, I'm going to see if I can get the advanced her to work. Oh. Okay, great. So the, the goals of this agenda item are twofold. We're going to review designs for accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, that are available through the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. These are for detached or freestanding ADUs. And we will be asking you to provide feedback to staff on which of those designs you would like to see receive particular promotion through the city's future, soon-to-be upcoming website promoting ADU development. So a little background on ADUs in Kattati. Interest in ADUs has been very strong over the last few years in ADUs. And in fact, there were a total of eight residential building permits pulled last year in Kattati, and all of them were for ADUs. Your recently adopted housing element sets a goal of building forty ADUs between the years of 2023 and 2031 in an effort to, as part of our effort to meet our regional housing needs allocation goals, arena goals. And within the housing element, there is a specific program area, Program 2-3, which includes several strategies all associated with the promotion of ADUs in Kattati. So one of the, the key aspects of promoting ADUs is, is facilitation of the, the development process by providing easy access to information and designs and plans. And we have been involved in a partnership with the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center to, to further that goal. If you go to the center's website, they have a fabulous website with just a ton of information and resources, including a design library, which includes, you know, the, the plans, beautiful pictures, descriptions of various ADU designs. And these are all for detached or freestanding ADUs. And right now, there are, it's not completely filled up for Kattati yet, but if you go to their website and you enter in Kattati-specific, a, a set of designs will be, will be filtered out for you that have been pre-reviewed by, by the center's staff and by our building inspector for Kattati. And ten of those, so there's twenty-one altogether, there will be twenty-one available through the website. So ten of those are for site-built ADUs, and those have been pre-reviewed by contractors in, for the center, as well as by our own building inspector for compliance with our building code. Eleven of those, twenty-one, are prefab, prefab or modular designs, and those have been pre-reviewed by the state Housing and Community Development Department for conformance with the California Building Code. So if you go to the website now, you get, I think it's like ten or twelve of those. What's happening right now is that the architects who have designed those, those plans are updating them for the most recent building code, and that is a bit of a process. And so those, as those are being finished and, and sent to the center, they'll be uploading them onto the website. So hopefully that will happen within the next month or two. We'll have our full twenty-one designs available through the center's website. And the beauty of the pre-reviewed designs is that it basically streamlines the review process. So when a permit application comes into, to our office, to community development, it shortens up the amount of time that is required by our building division. And that in turn saves money and time for the applicant. I should note that there are other designs on the center's website that are not the pre-reviewed designs, and applicants are free to, to choose any design that they want for their ADUs. There's just this nice subset that are pre-reviewed and that come up when an applicant is looking at the jurisdiction specific for Kattati. So our next step is the creation of our ADU promotion page on our website, and that will feature preferred designs for Kattati. And so what we are bringing to you tonight is to look at those designs and let us know, do we want to promote all twenty-one of those designs, or do we want to pick some that we, that the, the council feels are really in keeping with Kattati's character? Before we dive into the design, so I just want to go over the development standards for detached ADUs. So design review is, is not a requirement for an ADU, but there are certain standards that, that we review for that do, to some extent, limit the impact of an ADU on the surroundings. And those are really related to location on the property and the size of the ADU. So all of the ADUs are subject to minimum setbacks at the side and the rear of the property of four feet. The, the general height limit is sixteen feet for an ADU within those, those four-foot setbacks. There are, there is a new state law, a new set of state laws related to ADUs that just came into effect January of this year, which does raise the height limit in certain conditions. So now, a, an ADU that is close to, or is half a mile from a major transit stop, which in our case, the only stop that qualifies is Smart, so within a half mile of the Smart station, can maybe up to eighteen feet. Also, an ADU that's in a multifamily, on a multifamily property can also be up to eighteen feet in, in height. Our ordinance also allows that an ADU that is placed above a freestanding garage, as long as there are five-foot setbacks, that that can also be an eighteen-foot height for the whole structure. Also, the new state law allows an additional two feet of height on any ADU to allow for a pitch that will align with the pitch of the primary residence. So to the extent that there is a slope on the roof of the primary residence, an ADU may have an additional two feet to come up to a point, essentially. There is also the provision in our code to allow an ADU to exceed those height limits if it steps back to the full setbacks that are required by the underlying zoning district that are applied to the primary unit. The new state law also addresses front setback requirements. So previously, a jurisdiction could require that an ADU not be placed in a front setback, and that has been the case with our ordinance. So the state law has preempted that as of 2023. And so now, an ADU of up to eight hundred square feet in size must be allowed in a front setback if it can't be accommodated elsewhere on the. must be allowed in a front setback if it can't be accommodated elsewhere on the property. As far as the size of an ADU, we do limit an ADU to 1,200 square feet in size. And there are lot coverage limits for an ADU that is above 800 square feet in size, and that the lot coverage varies by the zoning district. So all of this notwithstanding, a building permit is always required for an ADU. Okay, so we're gonna go into the design library. So again, there are 21 of these, and these are the Kattati-specific designs through the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. And we'd love to hear feedback, if you have any, about whether there are designs that are more or less fitting for Kattati, in your opinion, that deserve extra promotion by being on our website. Okay. So, starting with the site-built ADUs, they are categorized by the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center by size. So these are small ADUs that come in under 500 square feet. The Vine, the Micro 150, and the Napa. And I'm pretty sure the Micro 150 is the smallest one at 150 square feet. I don't think those other ones there are quite that small. The medium category is the 500 to 749 square feet. And all of these ADUs, and there's one exception here, these are all essentially 16 feet or less in size. They were designed to conform with the previous iteration of the state law before the 18 feet came along. So we have the Agrarian, the Modern 650, the Addison, and the Andy. Okay, and then the large category is the 750 to 1,200 square feet. And there's the Five Gables and the Barn House. And so the double height here, I want to point out, this one is actually 25 feet high. And so even though this is noted as Kattati-applicable, I'm not sure that that would be the case in this particular iteration, unless it was set back to the primary unit setbacks. So to, between the, so from grade up to the corner of the top of the wall, there is 18 feet, but the peak goes up to 25. And that is, I think that is a 1,200-square-foot ADU. The others are, I believe, significantly smaller. Okay, moving on to the modular prefabricated ADUs. So in the small category, we have the Rutherford, the Connect One, Homes for Sonoma, and the Obodu Studio. And these are, I think there's four or five different architects. You know, they have sort of families of designs. And you'll see here, for instance, the Villa 550 and the Villa 750 are the same company. The Connect Two. And four more of mediums, the Obodu One, the Obodu Two, and the Millie L Shape and T Shape. Okay, and we can go back and look at those too, if you're interested. So that concludes my presentation. And you're interested in hearing your feedback and can take questions.
Thank you. I had one question. Thank you for answering some of my questions offline today. I just had a question about the lot coverage. Could you give me just a sense of how frequently that might preclude someone from being able to build a large-size ADU on their property? Is it the case that, like most single-family lots, wouldn't be able to build a large one? Or would they be able to usually?
My sense is that generally, the lot coverage will not be an impediment.
Okay.
The lot coverage really, it just includes structures. So, you know, any other features of the site do not include, are not included in the lot coverage. And for many of the single-family lots, in particular in Kattati, there's ample room for an ADU. Right, okay, yeah, exactly. So previously, pavement was included in lot coverage, but that has been preempted by state law. So that part of our code no longer is valid. And so that means the lot coverage issue is even less of a concern for ADU.
So if we were to, say, promote large-size, pre-reviewed ADU designs, people wouldn't look at those and get excited about them and then find out frequently that they actually wouldn't be able to do it because of lot coverage? Like, they generally would be able to build them?
That's a good question. I mean, I think there's so many other factors, including whether they can meet the setbacks, which is just a significant issue, and whether, you know, they are, they become more cost prohibitive as they get larger. So, you, you want to add anything else?
I would just add, a majority of the ADUs that we're likely to see are more in the 600 to 800 square foot, given the mandated rights that folks have to those with the reduced setbacks. Then, once you get over a certain size, you don't get to benefit from those reduced setbacks. So the larger ADUs would kind of more naturally be gravitated towards the larger parcels, where they're gonna not run into the setback issue. So that's exactly what Autumn is saying, is that other factors are more likely to limit people's kind of excitement about the ability to potentially build a larger ADU in a relatively small backyard space.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I also, again, I believe that, I'm sorry, I don't have the square footages here on these, but in looking through them, I really got the sense that, you know, a 1,200-square-foot ADU among these designs was really an outlier that really we are talking about, as Director House said, much more modest-sized ADUs. And that is what's reflected in these designs, you know, one- and two-bedrooms, modest-sized. And those have the additional, some additional safeguards within the state law that make them more feasible.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did read this, and the, well, a couple things. One question I had was, this is not like prescriptive, right? Like, they can still choose a different one, it just means that they would have to go through the building permit process, and doing it this way means they don't have to? Or what is the benefit of specifying specific ones?
So there are a few benefits. One is that, from our perspective, if we feel that certain designs are more in keeping with Kattati's character, then those receive additional promotion. There are even more designs available on the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center's website that people can avail themselves of and still use. When a, when one of these designs is pre-reviewed, then essentially what that means is that our review process is shortened. They all need a building permit. Any ADU requires a building permit. But if they've gone through the pre-review process, and that review is shorter, and that in turn saves costs for the applicant. But no, they are not limited in design. And they certainly don't need to use any of the designs that are even on the center's website. They're welcome to come up with their own designs and, you know, hire an architect to come up with something completely custom, too.
Okay, so, thank you. The other, just, you know, looking at the ones that were in here, and then also checking out the website, like, just my experience of Kattati is more of sort of the, I don't know, farmhouse-y kind of, you know, like, like, so the only prefab I won, one that I saw that looks like the houses I see in Kattati was the Villa. And it looks like most of the other ones that I'm seeing in here tend to be like more modern, on the modern side of things, especially the prefab ones. And I, you know, there's other ones like the Cottage, and Portola, and Bodega, and Suze, that have that sort of, that more sort of, you know, old-style, you know, farmhouse-y kind of feel, rather than the modern, you know, boxy, industrial kind of look. So I was just surprised to see so many of those other kind, and so few of the ones that look like the more craftsman-looking type of houses.
That is a good question. And I, my response to that would be, I don't know exactly, but where, how that selection process happened, do you know? I mean, I'm suspecting that it has to do with the cost of delivery of the ADU, that, well, delivery or construction of the ADU, that these may be more efficient.
Okay.
So that's absolutely the case. So some of it is, the prefabricated construction tends to lend itself to flatter roofs, less gabled, and because they are going for more cost-effectiveness, so it's just a simpler design. I would say architects trending right now are trending more towards contemporary designs often, and these were, a call essentially was put out by the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center to have pre-approved potential designs. And then they chose some that I think, they tried to have a menu of options available for various sizes and contemporary and non-contemporary settings. So this is kind of how it was vetted through their process. And then lastly, I think, also the effort to keep the height to that 16 feet lends itself to a flatter roof versus a gabled roof.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, I just was at the Housing Solution Summit that we went to. There was a discussion about having something like this. And they, I think, mentioned eight to 10 kind of options. But I see we have 21, probably because you have the site built and also the prefab ones. But I also agree with Councilmember Rivers about, some of the ones I was looking at, like Rutherford, looked pretty modern for our area. Maybe, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to say that we're not, we can't be modern here, but it just felt like it didn't really fit Kattati as well. The Rutherford, it's on a prefab, under 500.
There it is.
Yeah, that one right there?
Yeah.
It kind of stood out, and some of those kind of stood out to me. So I agree with Councilmember Rivers on that. But I think it's a good idea, I think, offering people more options. And like you said, they can go beyond this and pick their own, you know, but at least these are already kind of pre-vetted in a way, right? So, yeah, it's a good thing, so thank you.
Just one question, was, so that I understand. You say there can't be any design review of ADUs? So we couldn't even pass something, some objective design review criteria? Wow, okay, alright, thanks.
So you may have a Rutherford in your backyard.
Or in your front yard.
Or in your front yard, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that was one other question, sorry. So the front setback exemption, if you can't fit your 800-foot ADU anywhere else on the property, that means a zero-foot front?
Well, the law is really unspecific. It just says, you know, a front setback is no reason to not allow at least 800 square foot of ADU on a property. And so, you know, we discussed this internally, and, you know, our feeling is that there are reasonable standards. And one standard is that there, a lot of times, there's a utility easement across the front of a property. And so, you know, and we also felt like, well, if the rear and side setbacks are set to four feet, then it would be reasonable to require four feet in, you know, at least a four-foot setback, more if there happen to be any easements in that location. And we also discussed situations which would be, which would render it infeasible to build an ADU elsewhere on a property. And those would include other easements that might exist elsewhere on the property, natural features, trees, mature trees, you know, existence of other structures. You know, so certain things that it would be reasonable that a person could come to us and say, "I really, I really cannot build an ADU elsewhere on my property." So we sort of have our, kind of our internal criteria that we've mapped out, and will be continuing to try to interpret this. Is I think that other jurisdictions are also working on trying to figure out how to interpret this in a reasonable way.
Thanks.
So as a follow-on question on the utility easements, you're not allowed to put any structure where there's a utility easement, is that?
That's right.
Okay, so if there, that's there, that's a no-go. And you spoke about trees. So are you saying that people are not allowed to cut down trees to put an ADU in their yard?
Well, we would be looking first to our tree preservation ordinance for guidance. And, you know, what we talked about were really mature trees, so.
Yeah, I would just add, so the state didn't define what infeasible means?
Of course not.
Yeah, so when they pass a law that says, "If it's infeasible to build anywhere else, cities have to allow at least 800 square feet in the front yard." And they also didn't say you can or cannot apply a setback, or didn't speak to the easement issues. So internally, we felt that if someone came in and the only location that potentially was feasible in their rear yard or side yard was the location of a mature oak tree, or a mature redwood tree, or something that's listed, we would accept that as justification. Preservation of a tree on our preservation list, we would accept that as justification to say it's infeasible. If the council doesn't think the staff should, then we can change that. We're just trying to come up with definitions and policies in essentially a vacuum that the state has created. And we felt that that was a justifiable position, given the overall larger benefit a mature tree provides to a neighborhood, and the fact that, I mean, in Kattati, only the city council can approve removal of a mature oak tree. So we have, with our policies, identified the importance of mature trees. So internally, staff has, one of the interpretations that we are considering is that preserving a mature tree could be used as a reason to say that site's infeasible, therefore, you have to let me put it in the front yard setback, in the front yard. We're kind of coming up with this criteria list. We were just discussing it last week internally. To deal with these types of things in a lack of, or an absence of policy, we're gonna start to use probably zoning code interpretations, where they're formally identified and written down. And then basically, it creates a laundry list for future ordinance work, but allows us to have consistent policy application in the absence of that. And this would be one of those things. Until also maybe some case law shapes up from the courts, or something else that actually, maybe HCD or somebody interprets this statute to provide some further direction. The four-foot setback, we also, in addition to just what's being applied to other rear and side yard setbacks, right now, our code allows certain features to project into setbacks, like staircases, bay windows, and there's a dimension tied to those projections. So we thought, well, that's also a good factor to consider. So you setback the building, but the staircase could come down right to the back of the sidewalk.
And can you help me a little bit with the multifamily? I'm just, you know, thinking out loud here, you know, we have plenty of multifamily areas down East Kattati Avenue there that have what I would view as a lot of green space in the areas. So how, how does that work with one of those developments? Because there's individual units, and then a lot of green space in some of those. Do you know?
So some of the previous state laws regarding ADUs have allowed inclusion of ADU or construction of ADU properties on any multifamily property. So the language, you can even convert boiler rooms to additional habitable space. That's literally in the statute. And so, to your point, there is now a significant amount of this open space on these multifamily properties that are now fair game for someone to add ADUs to. And then some of the allowances in the most recent state code allow additional height up to, I think, 24 feet in those multifamily properties. 18 feet, I'm sorry. So you could do 16 feet in a rear yard of a single-family home, four feet from the side and rear property lines, but you're allowed 18 feet on a multifamily property. And I think the state is just assuming you're gonna naturally have higher density, which then means you likely have taller buildings. So the context of the existing development is less of a, less affected by an 18-foot-tall ADU versus a 16 that's now allowed in a single-family.
Right, I mean, can I?
Yeah, I wanted to add a little more information from our ordinance. So currently, not, no more than two detached, sorry, two detached ADUs may be located on a lot with an existing multifamily dwelling. Multiple ADUs may be developed, as Noah was saying, in storage rooms, boiler rooms, attics, et cetera, in multifamily settings. That number of ADUs, so that's internal, but it's allowed to be up to 25% of the existing number of units on the property can be added as attached ADUs within the structure.
Yeah, when I think again about a lot of those developments that are up and down East Kattati Avenue, they down East Katati Avenue, they have nice green areas for the residents, you know, to be able to gather and the children to play, and so on and so forth. My worry is, is that all the green space goes away and it gets filled, filled up with, with, uh, units. And so I'm glad to hear that, um, two is the limit. So that's not quite as bad.
Uh, can I just clarify? You said two detached, though, right? So if you have one that's attached, you can have two more that are detached. Is that correct?
I, the ordinance is, yes, I guess that, that is true. Yes, you could have them internal to the existing footprint of the building as well.
Well, I'm just like, I have a converted garage that's an ADU, so presumably I could add two more detached ADUs if I wanted to.
No, not if you're in a single-family zoning. So if you were in a multifamily zoning situation, you can have the two detached ADUs. If you're in a single-family zone, then it's a single ADU that you can add to your property. It's actually a single ADU and a single junior ADU.
Okay, so there could still be two?
Well, one would be a junior ADU, which is much more limited.
Inside the dwelling.
Yeah, limited in size.
Junior ADU is within?
So is a garage count as a junior?
Could.
It can. It's based on square footage.
500, is that? I'm just curious, because so 500 square feet, is that junior?
We, we'd have to look at it. There's a lot of criteria.
Okay, it's fine.
It's a specific definition, but essentially every...
Because I'm just thinking on my street, you know, having every house could have, you know, the ADU in the front yard, right?
Only if they can demonstrate to us that there's no other feasible location other than the front yard.
Right.
Which a majority of homes aren't going to be able to, especially on larger lots, are not going to be able to make that case.
Okay.
But just clear, just, uh, in summary, every single-family property, essentially in California, can now have a main house, an accessory dwelling unit, and a junior accessory dwelling unit. Those are all defined, but everyone has that. And then multifamily housing can now have their multifamily housing in keeping with the density requirements, two detached ADUs, and as much other internal space converted to additional units as they essentially can meet with the building code. And there's an example of a project in Rona Park that is converting all of their covered parking to ADUs right now. So this is starting to happen.
Sounded like there's a 25%.
Great.
Not as much.
Yeah. So the maximum size for a junior ADU is 500 square feet?
All right. So then in, in, in the situation I was talking about, just, you know, for, then, you know, we could have another detached one potentially replacing the driveway, for example. Right?
Probably rear yard.
And unless there's a reason we can't do it there, then we could do it in the front, correct?
A reason that meets the city's interpretation of infeasible.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Redwood trees and oak trees, yeah.
Just a question about the, it feels like 800 square feet is a, is a cutoff point for some rights and regulations. Why did the ADU Center use 750 as a cutoff for their design categories? It makes no sense.
I don't know. Um, I, I do believe that we have, um, joining us via Zoom, we have the Executive Director of the Napa Sonoma ADU Center. Um, uh, I'm not sure if, you know, if it's okay for us to ask him if he wishes to answer a question?
We're promoting Scott to a panelist at this time. He may answer those questions?
How did we lose him?
He's rejoining as a panelist.
Oh, he's rejoining over here. Okay, thank you. He moved.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to join. Uh, as far as the 750 versus 800 square foot question, the answer to that, it comes down to permit costs. The 800 square foot and less is the, uh, the state cutoff for a lot of protections for ADUs, but the permit pricing changes at 750. So there are kind of three permit categories, uh, small, medium, and large. Um, and it would be great if the state had actually aligned those, that 750 and 800 were actually the same thing, but the state didn't. So we, we decided to go by permit costs rather than state protection.
Thanks. That makes sense.
Yes, Laura. Could, could I just ask a follow-up question to that? Which is, what, how much, how big is the jump in permit costs from a medium to large?
Every city is going to be different, but impact fees cannot be charged on ADUs at 750 square feet or less. Once you get over 750, impact fees start to be applied. And that can be significant.
Can you give me a ballpark? What's a significant mean?
I, I mean, I, I would have to look. Um, I mean, $10,000 would not be a, would easily...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing no one jump up and run up, then, Kevin, could you?
Um, I do see that Scott Johnson, uh, from the Napa Sonoma ADU Center has just raised his hand, so.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I, I could have a quick couple of comments, um, to add some additional background. Uh, so for, with the question about the large ADUs and lot coverage, typically lot coverage is not, and I, I say this from speaking from across the 16 jurisdictions that we work and the more than 1,000 homeowners that we've answered questions with and talked to, um, lot coverage is not usually the issue. It is, it is size of yard, um, and cost are the two big drivers for minimizing the really large ADUs. Um, moderate and small ADU, 750 and under, uh, particularly 500 and under, tend to be a lot more common, again, for the same reasons. Setbacks, uh, cost of construction, many of these are being built for, to create, uh, multi-generational housing. Um, and so pooling family resources to create housing for, um, elderly parents or, you know, adult, uh, kids, often adult, uh, kids with disabilities. Cost is a really big driver. So they tend to be small, but, but independent, especially on the detached ADUs. Um, prefab, uh, prefab ADUs tend to be very boxy and modern-looking, um, as Noah said, because it's a shipping consideration. Um, they've got to fit them on a truck, they've got to fit them on the highway. So they want to minimize overhangs, they minimize the traditional construction detailing in order to maximize the internal space, uh, for, uh, shipping to be a truck. Um, the designs were chosen, uh, for the pre, pre-reviewed, both the prefab and the site-built for the plans that we have on our website. They were chosen by a slate of jurisdictional staff, architects, and stakeholders across all 16 jurisdictions. Um, we whittled that down to, I think, about 30 different designs to look at. And then we went through a couple of different panel sessions to whittle it down to the final 11 for site-built, I'm sorry, 10 for site-built and 11 for, for prefab. And we tried to get a good mix of modern, traditional, cost, size, uh, number of bedrooms, um, accessibility for, uh, people in wheelchairs or other mobility issues, and try to get at the broadest, uh, diversity of designs that we could to in those 22 or 21 designs. Um, with modern designs, the front setback issue notwithstanding, you know, with most ADUs being 16 feet or even now 18 feet tall, in the backyard, you just don't even see them. So a modern design is very often not visible from the street. On the front setbacks, what we see a, across the jurisdictions is that this, this, you know, it's still new, it's only about six months old at this point, but it's not brought up much. There are very few sites that meet the front separate, front setback flexibility requirements. Um, because the, the, they often have room to build up to 800 square feet in the backyard. And if they don't, very often the house is sited, the main house is sited at the back of the lot, and therefore it seems appropriate to put an ADU in front. And on the infeasible, um, I think Noah, as I've read some of the HCD letters about these kinds of questions, I think Noah is exactly right. ADUs, no, an autumn, uh, ADUs have to be a ministerial approval, particularly when they're under 800 square feet, uh, in size. And as soon as the city council needs to rule in on a tree removal, therefore it's no longer ministerial, it no longer can be a, a standard ADU approval process. So I think that the reading of the tree ordinance, uh, is exactly right, that that would cause an infeasible situation for someone applying for an ADU in the backyard. I know I'm over. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. And I'll bring it back. And any more thoughts? Any more discuss? Yes, Laura.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank, uh, Planning Department for working together with, uh, Napa Sonoma ADU, and thank you for being here with us tonight as well on Zoom. Um, I, uh, I personally was, was giving a lot of thought to what, you know, your question of what we should promote. And it seems to me we should, I, I'd like to see us promote all of the small and medium. Maybe if we were choosing to do a marketing blast or, or social media promotion, then we might pick some of the more craftsman-style looking ones that, you know, people in Katati will see and immediately recognize as sort of fitting in. But, but I think that anyone who clicks through to our actual webpage ought to be presented with as many options as possible, um, because everyone's house and site is going to be different, and it, we want them to be able to find something that's going to work for them and be cost-effective. I don't know if this is possible, but I would also love to see on our, uh, website, some kind of listing with a breakdown of the estimated costs and square feet, and just some basic facts about each design. As I was looking around through the, uh, Napa Sonoma ADU website, all that information is there, and you can find it, and it's wonderful and, and, um, really useful, um, gallery. But it'd be really nice if people in Katati could just look at a glance a table that had like those basic facts. I don't know if that's something that could be pulled straight from the Napa Sonoma ADU site, or a person would have to manually do it, but that, I think that would be really nice, and, and be able to just see all of the options right there. Um, thank you.
I agree with Vice Mayor Sparks that we should leave off the large ADUs from our website. Uh, I'm assuming our webpage would have a link through to the ADU Center where people could go for more. So I would, uh, more choice is not necessarily better in terms of people trying to make a decision. And, and so I would be comfortable striking some of the medium and smalls, um, from what we show, assuming there is a link through to the ADU Center to look at, uh, more options and things like that. So, I mean, I, I do want to say also that the actual act of striking them feels to me like it'd be more appropriate with the planning commission that serves as the design review body for the city rather than with council. I mean, I know what I like, but I don't really feel like, um, I'm, I've sort of been given that charge. But, um, but I'm happy to tell you which ones I would like to leave off. If, if we, if the council wants to go with a smaller set than the 18 that would be left if we strike the large, the three large ones.
Sophia, did you have thoughts? Okay, did you have any thoughts? Well, I would like all of them out there. I like the idea of, if we're going to do any marketing, that we market with the ones we like. But I think the option of having them all out there, even the large ones for those folks, because we do have properties within the city that could support those, I think, having that option. But lead with the ones we like from a, you know, ones that we're going to market and show in, in our things. And then, yeah, because I, I agree, some of them wouldn't be my favorites either. But, um, I think if we could tell you which ones we'd like you to market, I think that that would work. Yes.
Just reading, reading what we're asked to do here is to, to give some feedback on which ones to receive promotion through the city's ADU outreach program. So that is essentially a marketing program we're talking about. So it's, so the, the ADU Center webpage is available to anybody. They've got all the options. This really is talking about which ones do we push out there and try to encourage people. So I, I don't think all of them is my preference. I would rather, like, for instance...
Should we pick one from each?
Having the large ones on, on the city's website, to me, kind of dilutes the message about ADU as a, as a means of getting some affordable housing, and, um, it, it sort of just promotes a second market rate house on the, on the lot. So that's why I'm in favor of leaving, leaving the large ones off of our promotions and, uh, focusing on the small and medium that don't have impact fees and are really a way to, um, get a, get a smaller place on. So, um, I'm not, since what, there are no design restrictions on what people can do, they do have all the options, and, and I think we should provide a link to the ADU Center. So I, I really think we should, like, think about which ones would we want to promote.
Yes, Laura.
Um, thank you. So just to, to provide a little more information about my thoughts on keeping all of them. I, I was sort of thinking of promotion on social media and outward, beyond our site as one side of this, and then our own website as another. And I, I feel like it could cause some confusion if people came to our website and saw that there were eight options, or some, some, you know, some smaller number, that they might think that some of the other pre-reviewed ones weren't actually approved, or something like that, if, if they weren't there. So, um, that's why I feel like it's important to keep all of the ones that have been pre-reviewed, um, available on our website, just to give clarity that, yes, these are pre-reviewed.
With words to that effect.
With words to that effect, yeah. And then, as far as choosing ones to promote for outreach on social media, um, just a, kind of looking through the pictures, the, I lost my page here. Here we go. Um, the Addison, I think, looks really nice. The Andy, the, um, the Napa. Those would be, um, a few of my picks to highlight, maybe the Villa 550.
Did, sorry, did you say the Villa?
Villa 550.
Villa 550.
Yeah. Maybe the Millie L shape as well. So, but, yeah, I would, I would have a strong preference to keep the small and medium all listed on our site, because those are the ones that are going to be really easy for people to build, and I want clarity that they are, in fact, all pre-reviewed.
Well, I like the barn house. If I had to live in an ADU, that's what I'd want to live in. Yeah, a lot of these are, and I understand what he was saying, um, as to why they are the shape they're at. The more container-looking ones, I agree with comments that are made, don't seem to fit, although I agree with what was said from a height perspective, we may not see them. Um... Yes, Ben.
As long as we're naming some. Um, I would like to see the, the Vine and/or the Micro 150 included in the ones that are pushed, just because I want that notion of quite small ones to be out there as a, as a good option. Um, design-wise, I, you know, I, I like pretty much the same ones that Vice Mayor Sparks mentioned. Um, I, I think the Agrarian is also fine, too.
Um, were any of the ones that were, um, on the list accessible? Because this one, like, for example, the Maywood Cottage, uh, lists itself as being accessible, and I don't see that on our list.
I know there were some accessible units that were pre-reviewed. I do not know which ones. Scott might be able to answer that question.
Scott, could we?
At the, yeah, I'm sorry. Took me a minute to unmute. Um, at the, uh, the medium size, I believe the Atom is the smallest one that is accessible, and some of the other larger ones, I believe, are accessible. Um, but in medium, the Atom is, I believe, the only one that is truly, uh, accessible.
I'm sorry, is which one? The Agrarian? Is that what you said?
Uh, the Atom, I believe it is.
Which we don't even have.
Yeah, that's not on our list. I don't thi, I'm not sure we have any on our list. I just wanted to suggest maybe we have one. Um, it looks like this, uh, accessible Maywood Cottage is 600 square feet, so that would be a medium. And it's cute, it looks like it would fit here. Uh, the Maywood Cottage.
Yeah, I agree. That's a really important consideration. I'm glad you brought that up.
And this, uh, Sue's Retirement Palace, um, is like, is specifically designed for, for older people, for elderly. That might be a good one to include as well.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
It's called Sue's Retirement Palace. It's a 750 studio, it looks like... It's a 750 studio, it looks like it's designed for elderly people.
You retiring me?
No, that's just what it's called. It's called Sue, I didn't make that up, someone else named that. I don't know who Sue is. But it's got that, it's got that sort of Kattati feel to it, I feel like.
So is it a big deal for you guys to redo what you need to do to move some of these others? I know you've already vetted these, what is the process?
Yeah, so the, the pre-review process was spearheaded by Napa Sonoma ADU Center, and it's across all the jurisdictions. So the idea was that, you know, it'd kind of be a consistent list across the county, and actually two counties, making it easier for builders and then also for folks to kind of benefit from this process. There are four on the website that are accessible. Andy and Bodega are both listed as accessible, and I know the Andy was in ours.
The Andy is on here.
But one thing is, I know that they've been talking about trying to get some more pre-reviewed, and so as that, those next phases come up, or we look for other options to promote ADUs, accessibility can be one of the criteria that we push for as a part of our participation with them.
And design for elderly as well.
Correct.
That sort of aging in place.
Universal design, yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, have we provided you with the feedback that you require or need?
So-
More than?
We've heard a variety of perspectives, and I think generally, from what I heard, I think there is a majority of the council that would like to see staff promote all of the pre-reviewed units, small and medium, and then, but also an interest to have some of the larger ones, and so-
Be happy with one, at least for people to know that there's an option.
And I would rather handle that with a link to the ADU Center saying, there's a whole bunch more options, go see them here. But if-
But then it wouldn't get marked as pre-
Yes, they're all pre, they're all pre-reviewed. They're, the ones in here are all pre-reviewed, and they're so marked on the ADU Center, I'm assuming.
They're just, so that, as I'm reading this, the difference is they're all pre-reviewed. It's just if you click on Kattati, it limits the number that are there. So first of all, I don't think that Andy is actually on Kattati's list on the website. I know that it is on our page, but it's not in there.
And that's, they're in the process right now of updating some of them. So, but you are correct, and so that would be the case, Councilmember Ford, in that the ones that are kind of supported by Kattati, the Napa Sonoma ADU Center is going to filter them based on the direction we provide them. And so if the council could maybe parse their comments as to what we put on our website versus what, I mean, the interesting thing is, anyone could actually propose any of these as long as they meet the regulations. So this is just kind of how are we going to be supporting ADU development within our community? And when we originally included this as a housing element program, the council was concerned over the potential appearance of some of these units and requested that staff bring this back before the council, because it is a ministerial process. The residents do have the right to propose any of these. So this is really just a question of kind of elevating some designs on our own marketing materials or availability on the website versus other efforts.
Can I give a little response? So, one way to, my concern about including large ones on our page is there's this big jump in costs, and it's not consistent with the rest of the page that's, and so as long as, you know, there's some division that says larger ADUs are also possible with a significant increase in costs or something like that, then I'm fine to list some of these. But I don't want it to look like these large ones are comparable options to all of the small and mediums. That's, that's a big jump that I want to be clear somehow. I don't want people to get, say, hey, we can build an ADU, go look at the website, get attached to the big one, and then give up when they find it's expensive. I wanted to know from the outset, those are going to be expensive.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, you know, I want to make sure that we consider the fact that we, being a rural community, have lots of lots in the RVL and the RR capacity that they may want, you know, a bigger unit. And if they're only little, they might think, oh, well, I have to go out on my own. And I guess what I gathered from you is, they filter, and then they wouldn't see them if they saw Kattati without going outside of the filter.
No, that's not, that's not what he said.
And then the- I thought that's what he said, is on Kattati-
No, he said, we could, we could tell them which ones to list under the Kattati list, and it could be different from what we put on our website.
And can we do that? And will we do that, not make them be the same?
If the council provides that direction.
The other comment I want to make about the small ADUs versus the larger ADUs, you know, as someone who actually has an ADU that I rent out, you know, we did have a family rent out the ADU, and I think if, if it had been a two-bedroom, it would have been a lot more comfortable for them. And so it's not clear to me that, and they were, it was a low-income family, and so, you know, having this affordable housing, you know, even if one room is an office and the other room is where they sleep, or if they have kids or, you know, older people in their family, that, although I understand the, the drive for a smaller one because it's less expensive, you know, if we're, if the real effort is the affordable housing, then the larger ones have a lot of potential value as well for the community.
And to your point about aging in place, too, you know, we have neighbors that built one, and it's two bedrooms, and it allowed the grandmother, you know, to have her grandchildren over because she had a place for them to sleep.
Right.
So, are we, do you understand where we're at?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, one thing, I'm a little confused on one thing, too, but, but it seems like that, you know, sort of the consensus I'm hearing is that all of the small and all of the medium ADUs get listed on our website, regardless of style, but we can promote certain craftsman, if we do a social media thing. We can pick some certain styles that we think are more Kattati, that you guys picked out tonight. So that would be sort of the model ADU that's put out in like a Facebook post or something. But, but the website would have all of the small ones that are available, all the medium ones that are available, and a link to go to the Napa Sonoma ADU site where they can see all the small ones again and all the medium ones again, but also all the large ones, right? So you go to the Napa Sonoma ADU site and you see all of them, doesn't matter what size.
And can we, can we say on our website, if you want-
If you want to build something larger, yeah.
Ones that have been blessed, here's the link.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it might be helpful, do we still have Scott on the line?
Yes.
I think so, yes. I was wondering, Scott, would you be able to address the, these large ADUs? I'm sorry, I did not provide this information in the staff report. The, the ones that are the site-built, the Five Gables and the Barnhouse, do you know what the square footage of those are? Because I'm under the impression they're quite a bit smaller than the double height.
I have that written down if you want it.
Oh, yeah.
The Five Gables is 79, 798 square feet, the Barnhouse is 900 square feet, the double height is 1175.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a spread there in size. Among the large. Yeah, the Sue's Retirement Palace is 750, and that's the one that, it says it's Victorian style. It's like pretty adorable, honestly.
Yes.
So, I was basically arguing for what Damian just said, but I thought where we had landed was rather list them on our page with a clear delineation, larger ADUs are also possible, these have been pre-reviewed, but be aware there's a big jump in fees and costs.
Right, and I, that's, I guess my question is, so things like the Sue's Retirement Palace, is, who was it that decided it was not on Kattati's list? That was the, that organization, or did you guys, did we decide that?
No, it has not.
So that's, was not on the pre-reviewed list, chosen by a panel of folks from all 19 jurisdictions.
Okay, so the panel of folks from all 19 jurisdictions decided which, which of the ADUs should be on each individual town's list?
Decided which ones to pre-review.
Right, so I'm not asking in general, I'm just asking for us, like, who, who chose our list?
Napa Sonoma ADU staff at this point.
Okay, for Kattati.
It's different than other towns.
We have not provided input to them as to which ones should or should not be on the list, I think-
No, no, but my question is, so my understanding of when the representative from the ADU Centers, he said the goal was to provide a consistent list across all jurisdictions, but the way it's been explained here is each town has a different list. So I want to know what you did.
The only reason we would have a different list is if the city council asked us to. And Scott, can you speak to why, is, if our list is different today and why that might be?
Absolutely, yeah. It's a little confusing, and I apologize for that. Part of that is the rollout process that we're in. There are, all 16 jurisdictions have the same set of pre-reviewed plans that they can choose from. Some jurisdictions have said, give us all of them, like, we're not going to, we're not going to filter them. Other jurisdictions have said, we're going to pick from this list of 21, the ones that we're going to count as pre-reviewed. Even though the pre-review has been done other, other places, we're going to pick our own list out of this, this bucket. So in that sense, Kattati has the same pre-reviewed plans available to them as everybody else does, and if you decide to pick your own list, you absolutely can do that. And I hope I don't muddy the waters here by saying, you can pick designs off the pre-reviewed list if you want to reach out to the architect and have your own building team review their own designs. So you can add your own designs to this list as well. But at this stage, where we're at right now, every jurisdiction has the same list of pre-reviewed plans to choose from, and most have just said, give us all of them, and we're going to go with that.
So, so for this Sue's Retirement Palace, when I pull that up, it's not showing as being pre-approved for Kattati. Am I misunderstanding that?
Nope, that's correct. And so for the Sue's Retirement Palace, what it should do, if, if you wanted it to be, then that can be an arrangement between you and the designer to get it pre-reviewed for Kattati. They would provide you the documentation necessary for your building department to review it, and then you would just let me know, Sue's Retirement Palace is on our list, and anytime someone filters on Kattati on our website, it would show up, but it wouldn't show up for anybody else.
So, okay, because it is on the website, right? It's on the, it shows pre-reviewed jurisdictions. So, so there's just ones on there just for us to know about, but they're actually not pre-reviewed? Is that what I'm understanding?
There are a large number of plans, I think there's 52 plans currently, and only about half of them have gone through the pre-review process or have been chosen for the pre-review process. So there's a number of plans that are not, and at this point, you know, unless somebody reaches out to them, won't be pre-reviewed.
Okay, I get it. I had the impression that all of them had been pre-reviewed and only some of them were assigned to different, you know, locales, and therefore if we wanted to get on the list of pre-reviewed, then we would just say, yeah, add Kattati, right? But it sounds like, I, I understand now, thank you, that, that helped me understand.
Of course.
Okay.
So I propose we list them all on our website with a clear delineation before the large, that these carry significant additional fees, development fees.
And all being all the pre-reviewed?
All 21, yeah.
Yes, Laura.
And I'm hoping we didn't get lost, the suggestion to list out the square foot and the, some basic facts about each one on a table or something like that.
Yeah, basic facts, like square foot and number of rooms, oh, yeah, you can, yeah. Okay, are we there? Are you, are you guys good? Are we all good?
It sounds like the council has reached consensus based on Commissioner, or Councilmember Ford's suggestion.
Okay.
Oh, all right. One more quick thing, there's a link on the Napa ADU website to Kattati's ADU site, and it's dead, so maybe we can, maybe we can figure that out.
Yeah, there's some broken links, they were updating things.
But if I can just make the comment, I think this is really cool, just that we have this all, I mean, all this work that you guys did, I think, they said your name was Scott. Thank you for all of this. I can tell this was just a huge amount of work and for having, you know, some cute ones among the modern, you know, square ones. So thank you for that.
Thank you. It was a tremendous amount of work by a lot of jurisdiction staff, you know, like, all the jurisdictions really came in. Kattati was a very active participant in this process, and it was a long involved process, so we're very proud of it, and we're happy to be partners with Kattati on this.
Yeah, and I just would also give a shout out to the Napa Sonoma Housing Collaborative, who's been super helpful through this whole process, and they are funded by AVAG NTC, so the state is putting a little bit of money behind some of the mandates, just to know.
All right, are we, have we beaten this poor dead horse? Are we all good? Is everybody good? All right, we are going to take a five-minute break.
Just part of the flag raising.
So if the council wants to also, so the normal process is that is the city staff would just raise the flag when on the on the appointed day. If the council wants to have a ceremony, then it has to be, again, just from the same First Amendment perspective, it has to be a city-sponsored ceremony, which just means it's city-led. So the council would have to direct staff to do that.
Okay, well, I I would very much like to have one for both, for Pride and also for Juneteenth. And the idea that Pride would be on June 1st, and then on June 19th, the Juneteenth flag would go up, and then the Pride flag would return on the 20th, until the end of the month. But I I would very much like to have a ceremony on, a flag-raising ceremony on June 1st, and then a second one on June 19th. I do not feel like we have to have another one on the 20th for it to come back up again.
We don't have a policy or process for ceremonies. In other words, how do, you know, who is running it, what podiums, who are the speakers, do, you know, what staff has to be there, what, you know, what, what group is going to be there, and, you know, is there counter groups? And in looking into this, there there were a lot of cities that had, you know, actual policies and, and, what do they call them, standard operating procedures for that, where that's requested, and there's an application filled out, and, you know, all the requirements. Do I require, you know, a podium? Do I require a AV system? Who's going to speak? Who's gonna, you know, what groups will be there? How many people will be there? You know, things like that, so you can kind of manage, making sure that everyone's safe, you know, to to make sure that the event that we would be hosting is a safe and sanctioned event. So that's what a lot of the cities, when I looked into this, that's what they did. And I have asked that we, you know, put in a policy to do that, because I agree with the the concept, but we don't have a, you know, a policy of of what to do there, yet. I think we should, but we don't. Yes?
So it it sounds like what you're describing, in terms of allowing groups to apply to do this and talk about their needs, it might, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but it might run afoul of what we heard from the city manager and city attorney, that this has to be something directed by the city and not by an outside group, so that we're not turning it into a free speech forum.
Right.
So so I I would be supportive of trying to do something simple, to be able to have just a very simple ceremony this time, not since we don't have guidelines in place. We could still, yeah, have a small gathering.
But to publicize and say we're having an event for everyone in the in the community, and not have a, you know, the right process to be able to handle an event. I mean, it is an event, and to answer your other question, typically what the cities will do is, along the lines of what Sylvia was suggesting, the supported flags and holidays that we want to support, they put out there, these are for the whole year, the ceremonies that we will support. As we go through, I think, what Sylvia suggested, all the proclamations and things we want to support, the flags and the ceremonies were really part of that process, so so we know what that is.
And so this this is an interim? So I'm suggesting for the interim, so, for example, I was going to talk about this in my report, but I went to the Rancho Cattati High School and met with the GSA, and one of their students is speaking at the SCO flag-raising on May 31st, and another one said that she would love to come and speak at Cattati, should it all get approved. So I think that, I don't think that it would be a huge ask to, you know, and it could be very low-key, it does not have to be a giant thing, but, and I do see that, you know, it did say in the past five years, the Pride flag has been flown once in the last five years, but it's my understanding, Juneteenth has never been flown, so I would love to, you know, invite someone from, you know, the BSU at Rancho Cattati High School, or potentially the NAACP, or, you know, any of the organizations that we have in our area to come and, you know, make some brief comments, but it, I don't, it's not my, it's not clear to me that we have to have all the procedures and processes and everything in place before we do an interim of these two.
Okay. I just feel it'd be an extension of the proclamation that we already do, so it'd be just an additional step, and it wouldn't be for every, like, like, we had spoken about a slate of different proclamations, because, for example, Latino Heritage Month, I would like a proclamation for that, but there's really no flag, because Latino Heritage Month really recognizes all the different countries and their, you know, their experiences, but, so I'm, I agree with my council member Rivers, that even just interim, just something more of an extension of a proclamation and having like a small ceremony upfront. It doesn't have to be a full event, where we have all the procedures and protocols in place, but just invite a student and just, I don't know, we would put it on a webpage even or not, you know, maybe just, we'll be raising the flag or something, but not really an official event.
But she's asking for an official event, so we do have to, you know, account for how many people are going to be here, are there going to be?
Just to be clear, it should be an official event, if you want to ensure that you're protecting your your government's speech rights.
Yes.
Well, I've been wondering if, I was trying to say comment till after public comment, so, but we seem to be full into discussion, should I just?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We've lost our public.
I'm, oh, that's right, we don't have any. I'm, I'm reluctant, so, when we issue a proclamation, we do invite appropriate people to come, say some words. I don't feel the need to create a pretty significant effort for staff to create another ceremony for the same purpose. So I'm reluctant to get in the business of, what I see as duplication, at city council meeting, we have the event already happening, so we have an audience. It's embarrassing to ask somebody to come to something and then have nobody there to listen to them, and so it would create significant staff work to to ask, to to tell staff we need to have a ceremony, and we're going to invite speakers. That, right there, creates a significant amount of staff work that I'm really reluctant to to do without a much fuller discussion. So when, when, for instance, we issue a Juneteenth proclamation, we should make sure we're inviting the right people to be here and say their piece, and say their words. I don't, I'm really reluctant to add that to the staff workload, when we just went through, it is a significant amount of staff time. We put in, you know, when we went through the budget, just the the priority list just last month, we were talking about things that took a couple hours, and we're definitely past that level when we start asking staff to put on a ceremony up on a city hall. So I'm not a fan of adding ceremony in in what feels like sort of a matter-of-course kind of way. I think it's got to be a pretty major thing, because it's a pretty major ask, I think.
Two comments. First was question slash comment that we, do we have, I know we do a flag ceremony on Veterans Day, that the veterans group does, so do we have some process that was followed for that flag ceremony? I know it's not, do you know what I'm talking about?
That's the county.
The county deals with that?
The county.
There's the vets, the vets hall has a veterans group that operates out of there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we we do, you know, flag lowering and rate, you know, when there's national things or govern, gubernatorial things.
Okay.
Proclamations where they ask us to lower them.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to use use that, since we don't run that? I I personally, I appreciate Councilmember Ford's comments, but I do think that right now it is a big deal. Transgender people in particular are under attack right now, and I I think it rises to the level of, I think it would be very meaningful for some people to be able to attend a flag raising ceremony and see that flag go up. And I agree that it's not good to have speakers come, and there's not an audience for them, so maybe we could just tap speakers from the council or the planning commission, or something like that, so that we don't have to go through the process of inviting outside speakers. But I do think that, in particular, the Pride flag is important right at this particular moment, although I do agree in general with what you said, but I think this rises to the level.
I'd just like to offer, for the idea of the duplication of effort, if it was a choice between having a ceremony at the flag-raising and have the proclamation read there versus having it read here, I would prefer it to be at a physical flag-raising, rather than as part of a regular city council meeting.
And maybe as part of our process and our procedure, maybe that's for these ones that we want to support, maybe we should make that as part of the process, that the proclamation be held and and done there, or repeated there, or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, moving forward, but for for interim, you know, I'm still advocating for it happening now.
And are we going to be done with all of the work that's out there and the painting? Because we're just talking, this is next week. I mean, they just started to power wash today, and the electrical people were all over the place out there, jackhammering and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be, I think the curb ramps will be done, but there'll be paving work, and there'll be painting going on during the work week, you know, during the week.
We can talk loud.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think people just want to be seen, you know, I I think right now, like Vice Mayor Sparks said, people just want to be seen right now, it's a hard time for a lot of people, so even something small with just us, I think maybe would be good.
Yeah, and the idea of, you know, maybe, and and this would not even have to be a staff member, I think one of us could hold up our cell phone and livestream while we're doing it, you know, Facebook page of Cattati or something, you know, I feel like it it's more about the visibility, and about the recognition, and the acknowledgement, and the inclusion of the residents of Cattati that fall into one of these two groups. I think it's incredibly powerful and important.
So where are we at with this particular item? I mean?
So what what is required, a motion, or what?
Yeah, well, so the the item on the, sort of on the table, so to speak, is the is the flag for for Pride, and then we can talk about, we can talk about Juneteenth when we come back at the next meeting, have another conversation if we want to about that flag. But the more pressing one is the Pride flag, and getting an affirmative vote that we want to raise that ceremonial flag as part of our governmental speech. And then secondarily, this question of ceremony or no ceremony, and...
So those two separate motions, is that what you're saying? Or does it need to be?
It could, it could, I mean, however the mayor wants to do it, it could be the same motion, or it could be separate, separated out. It seems like the flag, the flag is, there's, everyone's on the same page with the flag, just there's different opinions on the ceremony, so.
So why don't we take it as two motions? I just, you know, I want, I want people to be safe. I I I understand, but I would also like to do it properly, and I'm concerned with the construction and the painting, and I I would like, you know, for us to do it well, I would like to have us have lined-up speakers, and everyone be present, and everyone know about it, and it be publicized, and and all of that, and I just, not seeing that we have the time really to do that in the next three or four days, because we're talking next week, so. I I along with that, I'm a little reluctant to add to the workload of staff at this point, since we've added so many other things. But I am absolutely on board with us putting up the flag, and if someone wants to be here and and watch the flag, you know, and 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 take pictures of it while it's going up, that's where I'm at. So, yes?
Well, to try to take them separately, can I move that we call for flying the Pride flag during the month of June, except for June 19th, when we fly the Juneteenth flag?
And is, we don't have to have a flag for the women's veteran that we did? They don't have a flag, just to be clear?
They probably do, but we didn't ask, and they didn't ask us.
Okay.
Not in my motion.
Okay, all right, okay.
I would second, but just with the clarity, do we need to say something about approving minor expenses to modify the flag poles and all of that, too?
It was just informational.
Okay. Second.
So we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Seeing none, then that passes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we hold a ceremony to raise the Pride flag on June 1st, and until June 19th, when we raise the Juneteenth flag, and then replace the Juneteenth flag with the Pride flag on the 20th, without ceremony.
Wait, sorry, is your motion to have a ceremony on June 1st for the Pride flag and a ceremony on June 19th for the Juneteenth flag?
Yes.
I'll second.
Have a motion, yes.
Could I ask for clarity before?
Sure, yeah.
We vote? What do you mean by ceremony? Can you describe what that means?
A government speech, government speech, flag-raising ceremony.
I just don't know what that means, though.
What are the logistics? What time is it? How many people? Who's speaking? Who's doing the, you know, what are the logistics, I think, is what you're asking?
Yeah, is it the five of us gathering and, you know?
Well, I heard.
Seeing the flag go up, that seemed to be one of the things possible.
You said speakers from the ranch.
Right.
You said someone from the ranch wanted to speak.
So because this was not approved ahead of time, I can't tell you precisely what the logistics are, because I didn't want to invite people before we had approved that we were even even going to do it, but I would envision it as a simple ceremony, where we raised the flag. Like I had mentioned before, someone from Rancho Cattati High School, from the GSA, could speak at the LGBT Pride flag-raising ceremony, someone from the NAACP or the BSA could come and, or BSU, sorry, could come and speak at the Juneteenth one, and, but I don't anticipate it being a huge, you know, hour-long type of thing, instead maybe, you know, half an hour, 20 minutes, I don't know, but the the purpose of it is not really exactly what form it takes, but rather that it it happened, and that we recognize the members of these groups in our town.
And are you asking that staff line up these people?
No, not necessarily.
It is a logistical question, so are you, are you volunteering to line up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will, I will be happy to find the people to speak at the flag-raising ceremonies, yes.
So does that answer your question?
So some, so some basic logistics would be, like, you're suggesting that you would take the lead on any sort of coordination of attendees or speakers, right?
Yes.
And we probably should, just in terms of invited people, we probably should...
So SCO's, for example, just as an example, theirs is May, their, for the Pride flag, is May 31st at 11:00 AM. So we could do ours at June 1st at 11:00 AM, June 19th at 11:00 AM. I mean, I I don't know, I I wanted to leave it sort of open for what's most convenient for the staff, because of this idea that, you know, I I can organize the whole thing, but I can't, you know, get the PAA out there, and, you know, whatever, I would need someone to help with that part of it.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely would suggest that it's during working hours, during.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Monday through Friday, kind of working hour time.
Yes. So I think the first is a Thursday, and I think the 19th is a Monday? So they're both within the working hours, and we could?
Yeah.
I don't know what time would work best for you guys.
Yeah, I don't know, we'd have to vet that out, but, and there'd be, I heard a PAA as a, as some like accessory stuff, but no other stuff, right? So I'm just trying to define some of the parameters. There'd be like no food, no drink, we're just talking amplified sound. I mean, I just want to, just to put some boundaries, understand kind of what what it means exactly, you know?
Okay, so so again, because I didn't want to, I mean, I can lay out an entire program, but I don't, sorry, but I I didn't want to do any of that until I had approval of the council, and so I'm sorry, I feel, this feels a little cart before the horse to me, but, you know, what I would envision would be, you know, standing, whoever from the council can come, standing out front, whoever from the staff wants to come, standing out front, whoever from the community wants to come, standing out front, maybe, you know, someone stands on the steps in front of it, and, you know, you know, a student gives a speech, a short speech, maybe someone from one of, you know, I don't know, LGBTQ connections, or some, somebody like that might say something, and then, you know, if the mayor is there, she could read the proclamation, and then we raise the flag, and then, you know, if people want to, you know, continue spending time together, whatever, maybe we could walk downtown, you know, I mean, this would not include anybody else, but like, in terms of food and drink and that kind of thing, I don't think that would have to be provided. I think we could go somewhere if people wanted to, and then the same thing for Juneteenth, would be the same sort of structure, would be how I would envision it. So I would not anticipate there'd be more than the person reading the proclamation, and one or two speakers at each event. That's how I would envision it, if that's helpful.
And, yeah, and I and I apologize, I mean, it sounds like we're going through the minutia, but it's just because we haven't really had the conversation.
No, I understand, I understand.
And then, in terms of advertising, that would be on the city, or is it private? So the city would be putting advertisement out for it?
On, like, on the city website?
Like website, social media, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So?
Water, I don't know, water bill, isn't that?
That.
Is it too late for that?
Yeah. Okay, so hopefully that helps, it helps me understand kind of the edges of it, at least, and I don't know, for you guys to consider as you vote on this.
And and I am completely open to having further conversations with you, Damian, going into the minutia later.
Yeah, I mean, the actual event, there'll be, there's plenty of minutia, trust me.
Yes.
Save everyone from that.
Yes, yes.
Just a a comment, my my preference would be for it to be pretty short, if people are just going to be standing, so there's no chairs or anything, maybe 15 minutes, keep it simple.
Yeah, it would be pretty short, because they're going to be painting and grinding the road, and you're not, you're not going to want to hang out, trust me.
Well, so, yeah, so, I mean, I, my my image for the speeches is not half an hour speeches, but like, you know, three-minute, 10, three to five-minute speeches of two people and the proclamation, that would be it.
Madam Mayor, can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to protect your First Amendment items here. If you, if you have speakers that are not associated with the city, let's make it, make sure we make a record that we invited them. You can chat with them first and say, hey, would you be willing? But then just make sure you invite them with a, an email, so that we have that in the file, and just in case we have an issue in the future about opening up a public forum, we want to be able to say, those were our speakers that we invited to speak.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that's why ultimately, when we get to a process, that's kind of part of the the application, is?
Yep.
Is that information's in there to document that.
Well, not application, but invitation, right? There is no application, because we're the ones initiating it, not them.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying the long, in the long one, then you'll know, then you'll know who's going to speak. You're going to take care of it this time, but typically...
But moving forward, we would still be the ones to invite them, rather than them applying.
But but a group may come forward, like some of the groups that we have had before, and they may ask for that, and then they would do a form of application. So we have had the Pride group come before, which is why we raised, raised the flag the last time. So some groups come, and they come regularly, and some not, for whatever reason, that group, you know, fell off.
I I do want to clarify one thing, because I I think I confused everyone a little bit. It's not as though you couldn't have a group come forward and say, look, we'd like to be recognized, and we'd like to, we'd like to ask the city to fly a flag. We just want to make sure it's clear, in the course of that, that that they're not, they're not the ones choosing where the flag is, there's this, there's this, it it has to go through a process in order for the council to decide, yes, we want that to happen, that's our speech, and so it it can come from an an organization, and still be city speech or government speech.
And that's why some of the cities, to Sylvia's requests, kind of lay it out a year in advance, these are the ones that we, as a council, you know, we want to support. And there's usually groups associated with them, and that's also a way to get a group behind it ahead of time, so we have that support there, so that someone is is there representing.
I just want to say that was very helpful to lay out that vision, that's what I wanted when I asked what it was, so thank you for that. I could support a minimal ceremony like that.
And and sorry, I pushed back, I was just, I'm like, I don't know yet, so, you know, that's what I pictured.
Well, but then we didn't know what we were approving.
Yes, I understand.
That's why we needed it.
Okay.
Okay, so?
Yeah, I just want to say that I can also help if you need help.
Okay, thank you.
So, somebody want to make a motion?
It's already on the floor.
Yeah, we need a second.
Sorry.
Oh, she did.
All right, then let's vote.
Further discussion, do we need public comment, or do we already do that?
I believe I can open it, there's no one here, and?
And also no one on Zoom.
Okay, all right.
So we're there, we've lost our public.
Okay, well, we did have, may I just make the comment that we did receive letters in support? From Marie, and Janet, and Rabbi Erwin Keller, and representing the Ner Shalom Community as well, or synagogue, and then also from Karen, so I just wanted to acknowledge that thank you for your letters of support.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? All right, that passes.
Damian, are you going to start this, or is Angela going to take it away?
This is Angela's baby.
Okay.
I expect him to interject as needed, I'm sure. So I get to say, good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public, virtually in the future.
They were so excited for your budget.
They they held in, I'm sure, as long as possible, these are really important topics, and I think the budget's really important, and we'll be going through it, but we'll also talk about how it's a malleable thing, and it changes, so we'll get to that. So again, this evening, we will be presenting to you the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. Also is presented within our budget study sessions, this is a budget cycle, it's a never-ending cycle, it just keeps moving all year long. The moment the budget is adopted, other projects and things come up, where we had an estimated budget or a cost... an estimated budget or a cost that we've adopted, but now we have new proposed expenses, expenses change, quotes come in that are less or more, revenues are a little bit less or more, and so we do take those budget adjustments from council throughout the year with any resolution. Outside of these adjustments, there's ongoing financial evaluations, and we quickly then, right through those evaluations, start talks on strategic objectives, and the next year's budget planning in November, December, and start this process over again with the mid-year budget and strategic planning all over again. So you're not done with me on the budget yet. So what our process has been this year, is that, starting on March 7th, we had the strategic planning session, followed by the budget study session on April 4th, and on the 18th, leading to today's budget study submission for adoption. At our previous meeting on the 18th, we had the summary version of our strategic objectives and budget focus that was brought to council, and we really honed these down to the city objectives, as summarized for the budget, as shown here. Changes from the last meeting include addressing the verbiage on the appropriate development, some detailing on the community outreach, outreach within the climate change section, as well as really expanding the detail, even though these are supposed to be summarized versions, but expanding detail on all of the bullets, really, within the community services section. So these are really, we still have our goals and objectives, but these are the summarized versions, but then tie into each of our departmental goals and objectives. So bad news first, the macroeconomic environment still has not substantially changed from the last time we spoke at our last council meeting. There's increasing levels of uncertainty and volatility going on, we have the same, you know, expectations of GDP growth in '23, that's estimated at 2.1%, which was consistent with 2022, and then, projections from there really only average 2.4% per year, for the next three years, from '24 through '27. And again, this is fairly consistent with what they're seeing in California, plus on top line California, we have the budget deficit of $32 billion, and ongoing labor and housing shortages. So there's a lot happening, there's a lot of volatility, and it plays into our budget as we've adopted, as well as leads into those, again, adjustments and things we might have to change going forward. So what are some other economic assumptions that impact the city, specifically, that are uncertain at this time? So the federal funds rate, I know it seems like a big picture topic, but it really does affect the borrowing rate and our local investments in development. So that rate increases, that's the cost of development in the city, so it's harder for developers to move forward with projects, because it just doesn't pencil as easily as it did six months ago, a year ago, when they maybe started thinking about this project. So included within our budget, we do not have any, you know, proposed projects, it's only those that are known at this time that are, are really in, going to be happening. We also have legislative impacts from federal, state, and regional government, so we know that things are changing all the time due to, you know, even what, where you can have an A D U on your front yard lot, and how that might impact our fees that we receive. And so there's ongoing impacts, we don't know how the state's really going to fill their budget hole at this point in time, before they've done some other things, but those are going to have some impacts to us, and they aren't included in our budget currently. What is included is our, what was already presented in the budget study sessions, and you're going to hear me say that over and over again, but I want to make sure the slides for anyone that's just looking at this for the first time, they're getting the same picture. So we really have that slow tax happening, there's pretty much static, not, not significant growth, if not, and that's across all of our taxes. It includes also that uncertainty in development revenues, and a decrease in the water consumption is going to continue, we've had significant rainfall, people have had less irrigation usage needed, and have been doing a great job of conserving, and so that does decrease that revenue source. On the expenditure side, we have the project costs, which are based on engineering estimates, again, those are just estimates, they're good educated estimates, but the economy drives also the businesses in that area, if everyone's hard up for work, we might get some better bids, we might get things coming in at lower costs, as they're trying to decrease their margins that they need. The increased cost of insurance, we had a significant discussion on this, what is included in the budget, it was the most recent update we had from them, but we still don't have final numbers from them at this point in time. The utility cost increases, P G and E has said that they're increasing 18%, so that is what is included in here, we are hoping other utility costs are decreasing, but, or, sorry, aren't as high, they're all increasing. We do have full employment is what's budgeted in our budget, based on the F T E schedules for approved positions, and we do have the continued full lump sum payments at CalPERS scheduled in July, which then reduces our cost of that unfunded pension liability payment. So on to our primary fund, the general fund is used as pretty much all the inflows and outflows that are not special purpose funds, and this makes up the core of operations for the city. Making sure I don't have any sliding things, and I'm following the right slides. So the highlights of the general fund is that we have, we do have increasing operating revenues, though not to the same extent we've had in prior years, of approximately $227,000 for the next fiscal year. We do have a balanced operating budget of $887,000, where the operating revenues are at 10.3 million, and operating expenses are at 9.4 million. Now, those are just the operating components. Now, we are using the surplus funds, plus our surplus fund balance, to continue to fund capital projects through those transfers out, and that's approximately 4.2 million that we're funding in capital projects, and we're leveraging those capital projects, a majority of that from the general fund is going to be towards the grants fund, which we're getting 1.3 million in grants matching, is what we're looking at currently. The ending general fund balance after all of this is expected to be at 3.7 million. This budget reflects a total operating reserve of 40%, which exceeds our 25%, we usually do try and stick around a 50% reserve, but with the ongoing capital projects and the grants needs, this is where we ended up with the projects that we have proposed, as well as the operating expenses, offset by the less than increasing revenue than we have had in the past. I did want to note that this does include the $200,000 contribution to the 115 pension trust plan, according to our policy, where we are funding those. Into the 115 trust. So as stated before, this budget is set for a period of time, but really, it is a required tool that can't be looked at in a vacuum. Some risks that we are aware of, is that our proposed budget does not provide what we would like to have, is that 1.5 million in operating surplus of funds. And that's so that we can continue to hold those for contributing towards capital projects in the future, so holding in those surplus funds, getting that operating surplus to pay for those capital projects, and then leverage, having that to leverage for grants as well. We do have planned possible additional funds that might be requested as a part of mitigating the CalPERS losses, and we're going to be bringing that back to council this fall, once we get the final loss reports from CalPERS, and we bring back our, you know, pension unfunded liability policy update, you know, where we stand with that, but there might be some recommendations that we also put some more additional, additional discretionary funds towards that, to bring us back into compliance with our coverage. The cost of the park and ride lot, the replacement project, so again, this is based on an initial estimate that we had, and now the estimate's changed, and it's $1.6 million higher than our available funding, and in order to really firm up that number, because it is significant, we're actually taking it out to bid now, so that we can have a better idea of what this is really going to cost us in order to get that project completed, and move forward with the hotel development, which is already under.
Angela, sorry, just to interrupt you for one second.
Yes, in New York.
So, yeah, yeah, so these are, I just want to stress, these are really important points, that, that we're on the, this, this budget, this 2324 budget is on the last year of the, of the funding that was acquired as part of the pension refunding and the streets, streets work. So that's why, you know, there's, I mean, there's a lot going on right now, but then we're going to move into a more of a steady state type operation, where we're not going to have that giant, you know, peak in funding. So, so throughout this fiscal year, a lot of, you know, a lot of our focus internally will be on the net operating surplus, so as it, as she points out, it's basically 0.9 million is where we are, which is, I mean, it's good, I mean, we're, you know, we're positive, which is certainly better than some of our neighboring cities, but, but it, it's really easy to end up in that position if you don't diligently go after your operating expenses and make sure that you manage it well. And, and don't just add, you know, or at least you're fully aware of what you're adding when you're adding new costs, ongoing costs. So, so some of it, you know, we're going to continue to look at it internally and try to scrape back as much of that sort of net surplus as we can, but also, you know, we've been talking internally about, in our staff reports, just trying to elevate the, you know, this is the cost now, but this is like a projected ongoing cost in our financial sections for all our reports, just so the council's more aware of not only the one-time costs, but any future costs, maybe like five-year costs, so that when you make a decision, you know, is this something that's going to be continuing, that's going to basically chip away at that operating surplus, or is it something that's been budgeted, or is it something that's a positive for the city, so.
Can you take questions?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious how exactly that 1.5 million number is arrived at?
So when we do our, our pavement maintenance, that's just like the slurry seal and the repairs and the striping, you know, the basic, so we're not talking about the rehabilitation type work, like that's happening around the city right now. So this is just, you know, as we get off the rehab work, or maybe that's more grant type projects, and we start rotating around the city on a six or seven year cycle, you can, you can basically say that a million is gone, right, that, that's what it's going to take for the roadwork. And then the other 500,000 is for park work and city buildings, and/or carrying some fund into the next year to build some balance for park work, or building, like, you know, new roofs, or things like that.
And grant matches?
So the half, and grant matching, yeah. So the half million is, it's, the half million is a little squishier, but it's really, you need some money to be able to maintain, to do park stuff and building stuff, and that's not a lot, really, in the scheme of things, and grant matching.
A quick question about the slide, the park and ride replacement project, was that, was there any offsets from the hotel developer for that?
Yeah, the sale of the hotel property is 2.375 million, and the, so the engineer's estimate, which could be right, or it could be wildly off, we don't know, is about four
Just a follow-up question on my first one. What?
I don't know.
Okay.
Magic.
If we're planning for ongoing road maintenance to cost a million dollars a year, why is that not part of our operating budget?
Well, it, it already kind of is part of our operating budget, it's sort of embedded in this current budget. We have, we have some big rehab work going on right now, but we also have, we also have a, I don't know, $600,000 pavement maintenance project in this current budget.
But, okay, I'm just not understanding, because you're saying we need a million dollars of operating surplus to do road maintenance, it seems like, I don't understand why that wouldn't be part of the, like, why wouldn't that just be accounted as part of the operating budget, so we.
Yeah.
For simplicity.
So financially speaking, so once you get to a road maintenance index, then you can count that all as maintenance. So once you're just doing slurry seal, then you can move that, if you, if you so choose, to be a, an operations component. However, when you're doing major construction, it is capital, when we're doing digouts, when we're doing those types of pieces, it is all capital, which means we have to physically capitalize it, we accumulate all the costs that are associated, so that we can depreciate it over the life. And so that's a component of it for just the budgetary purposes. Yes, it is operations, it's something we need to continue operations, but it is something that you, you can cut in needs of, dire needs, right? So that's might be part of our plan, that we need to bring back the policy on our emergency fiscal policy. Those are things that, if it's in those other capital lines, those would be the first things that we would look up to minimize before we do operations, and because those are the things that are contractor-driven, easier to get, you know, get out of those contracts as a capital project, and we can isolate those as additional, they are, you know, a component of our day-to-day operations, even though it is a part of our day-to-day lives here in Cottati.
So there were years that we did not fund any road stuff, because we wanted to keep the lights on, basically, so.
Thank you, that, that helps.
Okay, so, again, that, these are the things that we, we know about, that are risks to us currently, that are not really explicitly, well, except for, we know that the 1.5 million's not included, but we hope to, you know, maybe with our conservative budgeting, operating expenses might not be, you know, once we look at those quarterly reports, they aren't as, you know, immense as we think they are, or operating revenues, you know, we don't have the sales tax impact or decrease that we're expecting, however, this is what we're projecting at this point in time. And I think this really summarizes what I already said. So the revenue forecast assumptions are based on the information today, we have those conservative estimates, so we do use consultants to really help us use this economic assumptions, and our Cottati-specific businesses and historical sales tax receipts to drive what a best estimate is of our sales tax, since that is such a large component of our revenue that we are reliant on here in the city. We also have them, work with us on the property tax, it's not as variable, but we do have some good, you know, developments that have just started, and so those will come into play in the next year, where we have some, you know, slight increases in our property tax, which is a good light. Other pieces that are decreasing, of course, are also that cannabis business tax that is decreasing just due to an industry slowdown post-COVID. So this is all very consistent with what we had in our budget study session. So looking at it on a numbers basis, we have that increase of 1.2% over our estimated budget to our proposed budget, and again, we do compare this to our estimated budget, because our adopted budget from last year was significantly, you know, different things change, we're conservative, and so our estimated budget was better than we had proposed. Operating expenditures for all departments, so this is looking at the general fund in a whole, so for our 2324, we have that lump sum full payment to CalPERS for the unfunded liability, it's approximately 1.2 million. And then we have the initial contribution to the 115 trust of the 200,000. We have an increase in the allocated contract services, and these are those shared indirect costs, such as audit fees, janitorial costs, utilities, the increased costs in insurance, the estimate increase is 18%, we have still a lot of market uncertainty around that, and hopefully we'll get a better budget number for you, and bring that back as maybe, hopefully, a budget revision. All departments are budgeted at full staffing, and estimates are based on that existed staffing for, so, sorry, excuse me, let me step back. The estimates for the fiscal year 2223 are. The estimates for the fiscal year 2223 are based on the existing staffing and our salaries and benefits date. However, the 2324 are based on full staffing. So that's the differential compared to years. They include all the negotiated MOUs for 2324 and the evaluated staff that we brought back, including the PD trainee that was just at the last council meeting. So in total, the proposed change in operating expenses for the general fund is 11.6% from the estimated actuals in 2223, but, and a 7.5% increase from the prior year's adopted budget. And for this one, I really kind of do prefer to look from adopted budget to adopted budget because we do continuously budget at full staffing. And so really those are the apples to apples for contract services changes as well as the staffing changes that drive that. So highlighting the departmental changes, so there's no significant change in any of the departments from what was brought to council during our strategic planning, or during the budget study session. The change in the city councils, the increased health insurance and training, but the decreased contracts and other expenses. The city manager includes the changes for new professional services and special projects contracts. Those are mostly related to MOU negotiations, which are not every year, and so that changes. The administrative services has the change in staffing from 4.5 to 5.5. The community development has apparently changed due to permit expense and the special projects related to Santerway and the bike pad. Public works has the increased annual landscape improvements. And we increased also the, moved that landscape component also to capital. So there was a little bit of change from what was brought to council. We moved some of that to a capital expense so that we have it as a recurring thing that we can earmark and say, this is a capital thing, just like our pedestrian safety piece that we have in a capital. We specifically say we want to spend this much in capital improvements related to this. We wanted to also do that for the landscaping. And we do also have increased parks contracts related to maintenance. The police services department has an additional cost for the new records and crime analyst position. The training and related overtime, that's continuing to increase as things are coming back post-COVID and travel related to those trainings, as well as the allocated insurance. So they have a larger FTE, they get a larger allocation, leads to a larger cost. And the recreation, really the only change there is their allocation of insurance based on their FTEs and then their bank fees. So they have the whole rec desk program that they run. Each time you register for a class or an event, there's bank fees that are associated with. So during COVID, we weren't hosting a lot of stuff. Now we're moving back into hosting a lot of events, more fees, which is great, we have the revenue. But then we also have the bank fees associated with that. So into the non-operating pieces, the general fund transfers. So we do get some transfers in, so we get some money from our special revenue funds, specifically the COPSS grant and the Prop 172, which bring in usually 170,000 every year. I do expect that to stay pretty consistent. And then we do have a refunding back to the general fund from the community facilities district as we funded it in advance while they were getting going. And now that they have monies coming in from the assessments, we are now pulling that back to the general fund to replace that loan. We do have transfers out, again, for all of those capital projects primarily. So it's a capital projects fund, which is getting 1.2 million. The grants fund, which is getting 2.9 million, which is then receiving a matching 2.2 million in grants. The debt service payments are approximately 810,000. And then we do fund the K9 fund, which is expected to be around 30,000. This is a measure of funding for the program, and that is a little bit higher due to the replacement of the K9, the training related to that. So on to, oh, no, it's going to happen, capital projects. So here's the detailed summary of the grants projects. So these projects are as proposed during the last budget study session. There is a total of over 5.2 million in projects where our contributions are bringing in grant funds of 2.2 million from these multiple sources. We have, I think, the Cottati Park completions, just kind of a lingering piece of that as we hopefully bring in that restroom component coming on and then open that park up to the public. The other park that's on here is the Sunflower Park, which we did receive the grants fund vinyl award on. And then we have other streets projects primarily happening, as well as a possible wastewater system emergency generator. We have that listed on here, but it would really just be moved forward if we get that grant. So it is earmaterer and, and listed as a current project, but would only move forward if we get those funds. Other non-grants projects for the city for the fiscal year 2324 are consistent with what was presented. And total projects are approximately 1.4 million for the year, covering all the projects listed here, several for the parks, the streets projects and building. I do want to let council know that typically we do adopt the full five-year capital improvement plan along with the budget. And it is kind of presented online with the full five-year capital improvement plan. However, due to noticing requirements, we had, we're going to have to bring it back at the next council meeting for the full five-year. So it doesn't impede adoption of the budget. That's just setting out the rest of the plan for the next five years as it was already adopted by the planning commission and we've discussed those items. So for our special revenue funds, I'm going to kind of blow through these. These are the funds that are established by government or state or the city, which restricts the use for a specific purpose. So here's the summary of all the revenues for the special revenues for 2324, and it's approximately 975,000, all of which is earmarked for these different special purposes. So gas tax goes right into our streets. Our MRA is also streets. Public safety, that's our transfer into the general fund to supplement the police departments, so on and so forth. The parks has to go to parks. Bed tax, parking lieu goes to parks. So they all have their special designation as to what they're being used for, and that's what we intend to use them for. I also wanted to present the breakdown of how these special revenues are generated as some, you know, approximately, I think it's 42%, are derived by taxes. And as we were talking about earlier, these are highly volatile. And at this point in time, we really will be continuing to evaluate these on a special revenue basis because they do offset some of those capital projects, the streets specifically, right? As far as the expenses. And so we want to continue to monitor, monitor these, make sure the revenues are coming in. The gas tax, you know, for some reason people stop driving because they can't afford it. We're not going to be receiving in those same amount of gas tax funds that we would otherwise. And so we want to pay close attention to that because it might affect our funding that's available to that. And then we would have to supplant it with general funds. And again, so this is just a summary of the, over the years, what all of these expenses are. And you can see that primarily it's a transfer out as they provide funding for our capital projects. The biggest piece of all of these is that they go to parks capital projects or streets capital projects and provide a majority of their funding towards those sources. They, they aren't huge contributors, but they absolutely have an impact. And in times when you don't have the general funds to do the projects you want, these would be the funds that we, we absolutely use first. So on to our internal service funds. So the vehicle replacement fund is proposing 337,000 for vehicle replacements, including the evaluation of EVs were available and affordable. We do also have the compensated absence fund, which continues to fund compensated absences expense and paying down that liability that the city has on our books for compensated absences. We are proposing increase of the compensated absences based on the changes in salaries and benefits because it's based on the number of hours accrued that we have that liability. So last but not least is the enterprise funds, which account for our business-like operations, which are our water and sewer. So overall, these funds are very much in line with what was presented at the study session. The budget proposes that we maintain the reserve of 33% of operating expenses. We implement the rate changes as were already adopted for the water and sewer rates study. It is projected to use, we use conservative revenue and expenditure estimates. And we continue to focus on really planned infrastructure as a part of our rate study. It's really finely tuned into the rate study, what we can afford and when in order to not affect the rate pairs as much as possible. So I deeply apologize, but the water fund sheets for the budget book did not get included in the agenda packet. However, they were subsequently provided today and will be provided as a supplemental attached to the agenda, and they were available online for the online budget book. So operating revenues, we have the rate increase, but really no increase in connection fees that are expected, and those tie in directly to development. So again, since we're not counting development, we don't really count connection fees related to those developments. And we do have, though we have a rate increase, we're expecting less consumption, thus less revenue. The proposed capital project improvements are the SCADA server upgrade and relocation, the water hydrant ATM, as well as the well 1A just ongoing maintenance projects. The changes in operating expenditures, they have reduced expenses somewhat in the small tools and equipment and the capital fixed assets. We do have approximately 11% reduced costs in aqua water usage. And I wanted to say that that's compared to the adopted budget for 2223. We do have, just consistent with the general fund, the increased utilities, specifically electricity and contract services. And we are proposing to just continue the conservation programs within the budget. Next, we have the sewer funds, which are consistent and proposed, as proposed with the budget study. And with the sewer funds, there's the rate increase that's applied, no significant connection fees. We have the SCAD, their portion of the SCADA server upgrade and relocation, as well as the Cypress sewer start of that project. The changes in the operating expenditures are the allocation of expenses, the increase in the wastewater treatment, and the debt service to the general fund. So overall, the proposed 202324 budget really, we try to hone in on the strategic planning components. We've gone through our projects. We've proposed expenses that go along with those projects and staffing that goes along with meeting those needs. We do want to continue to initiate actions towards addressing climate change and equity within these goals. We have a balanced budget where our operating expenditures do not exceed, our operating, our operating revenues exceed our operating expenditures. And we're going to continue to look at those and monitor them and bring back reports to council on where we're meeting those at our quarterly financial updates. We're, we're still continuing to significantly invest in all this historically deferred capital projects. We have a lot of street work, painting, just things that have been deferred for a long time. I was just saying how beautiful the city hall looks, even just pressure washed. Those things that we, you know, couldn't do, and, and now we're getting to them. And, and it just makes us feel better as a community, and it's great. But that we need to also look at, you know, how do we continue to still look at maybe reducing some operating costs and expenses in the future? Set plans and policies in place to identify any future risks and what we're going to do to mitigate those. We do feel like this is fiscally prudent at a very conservative 40% of fund balance. And, and that's really our goal and objective is to provide a prudent budget for everyone here to work off. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to take more questions.
And you'll notice that the black and white logo snuck its way into this budget book.
Sorry, I did.
We're working on the color one, we should have it any day now.
Questions? Any questions?
I did notice that there was a line item or something for Caterfield, Caterfield. But I'm just trying to clarify because I think NorCal Oaks was doing some field repair or two. So that's something separate?
So their repair of the field, and Dave may correct me, is not included within our budget because it's not our funds. So they would be doing the repairs, we would, you know. However, we are looking to maybe do some other minor, other improvements alongside of that. So it's not the actual field, but the whole area is called a field. So it has a really good description of it in the project within the, the five-year plan, the, yeah, of what we're looking at. And it does include, when we're drafting everything up, it did include an initial, you know, design and thought towards a dog park. And they kind of said that they were going to support that, maybe do that. So we have it somewhat in there, but if they decide not to do it, we still want to, so work with them on what we might do, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Kevin, can we open this up for public comment?
Yes, still no Zoom attendees, so Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All right, and there's no one here in the audience, so I'll bring it back. Yeah, I mean, my only concern, which, thank you Angela for spending time with me, is that, you know, for so many years, we've, we've worked really hard to kind of keep the revenues and expenses, those lines closer together. So it does bother me when I see those expense lines for 23 and 24 so far away from the revenues and that we're chipping away at the reserves, you know, that we had. I mean, we, we were typically up, you know, when we were over 100, that's probably one could say too much. But, you know, getting down to 40%, we're, we're, we, we can't continue like this. So I do have concerns when I see that two years in a row, those, those bars going in that direction. I think we really need to, you know, start, especially given the concerns around our sales tax and that flattening out. And, you know, who knows what will happen, whether that will even start going down. I, I would hope not, but, and as far as the property taxes, we can hope that there's going to be building. But, you know, we know that building, you know, sometimes takes decades for it to actually come to, to fruition. So I, I just have concerns around us spending at this, at this clip and, and dragging down our expenditure reserves. So I just want people to be cognizant of that we are to do some of these things. We are having to draw down our reserves to, to do that. So we, you know, last year we had, let's see, where are those numbers? So in 2021, 22, we were at a total reserve percentage of operating expenses, we were at 72%. And then in 22, 23, we are ending up, which is good, at 90%. So we, we made some back at our adopted budget, it was 53. So hopefully in the 2324, we're down to 40%. We can hopefully, you know, recover some there also. So that's my only concern with that.
Yes?
That raised a question for me, just for some clarity. Isn't some of that volatility in our reserve level have to do with the timing of the pension obligation bonds? And then spending some of the funds for street repairs and things like that?
That would have been in 2021, 22. That would have been some of that. But really, the most significant component of it is the capital projects. We have a significant amount that is funding capital project at the current point in time, yeah. And then we will have ongoing debt service for those, for the streets and the unfunded pension liability refund, which we mentioned earlier. So those will be other pieces that are still ongoing, future costs that we'll have to cover with net operating.
Okay, but some of the spending down of reserves was planned for capital projects? Okay, but some of the spending down of reserves was planned for capital projects, right?
What was not planned is the reduction in sales tax that came in. So if you look at the revenue from the adopted, even though the adopted was conservative to what the estimated actuals are, we are seeing a reduction in the sales tax receipts for the year. And so that was not significant, you know, we did know those were happening, and we kind of addressed those during mid-year, but there are changes that happened. But yes, they are planned, capital projects that are part of our five-year plan and are included, but I don't know if that answers the question? Okay.
And all I'm saying, Laura, is that we can't keep spending like this, and it does worry me when I, when I keep seeing this, that we kind of need to be cognizant. So when we're approving those capital kind of expenditures, that we're cognizant of, you know, that, that we could be driving that. That's all. I'm much more comfortable when they're, when they're more equal. And when I, when I see two years in a row where the expenses are higher than.
And I do have to say, that's kind of a new, kind of different graph because it does include all expenses, so it includes the transfers out in that graph. Previously, we always had just operating to operating, and so this is a new way of looking at it, where we're actually evaluating what the real cost of this budget as proposed is for the general fund. Yes?
I had a, so that, my question is about the pension sort of payback. Is there, I got the impression that there was sort of an end to that, that we were going to like pay it, and then once we get to where it's supposed to be, then it becomes regular, something we expect every year? But when I read this, it sounded like that was inaccurate, so I just wanted to clarify.
And that's why we bring back a specialist every fall now. That's part of our plan, is to bring somebody to come and interpret what is happening with CalPERS and what its effects are. Because every time they have a loss, it hits the city for the period of time of, you know, they, they step you into it over four years, I believe, and then you get to amortize that cost over, I think now it's 30 years now, anyway. So it's, it's, every year is changing what our cost is going to be. So making that significant paydown deferred, or it saved us a significant amount because we had a bond rate that was significantly less than what CalPERS rate was. And so that refunding was a saver for the city. However, then they went on to have more losses, and so now there's new layers of this future expense that keep getting added to the city for this pension liability. So it's ever-changing every year, and so it's, it's not going to be a one-and-done issue, and this is what it is. We hope we can continue to evaluate it every year and try and make it as consistent and manageable as possible, where maybe those were able to contribute more towards our 115 trust in lieu of funding it directly to CalPERS. For some reason, we want to keep those payments level and prepare for the future. You know, that's a part of our plan. But currently, it's, it's every year, let's evaluate it and see what's going to be best to save money for the city.
Yeah, I think it's an ongoing maintenance thing. The $200,000 that's in the budget was the, as Angela said earlier, was the projected annual average savings. So we're paying $200,000 less than we would have otherwise if we had not done that, right? So, so we're paying our CalPERS bill, and then the 200,000 average annual savings is going into a 115 trust for future pension payments. So that's, that's already baked into the budget. What was put in one of the slides as a general fund risk is that last, last year, CalPERS had a really bad year, and so they lost a lot, they lost a ton of money. And it's going to be like that every year, not, hopefully not losing every year, but every year, they're going to be either above or below their assumption on returns. Some years, like last year, it's going to be a bad year, and so the actuarial report comes out this fall, and then we'll have to have a conversation about, do we do anything about this or not, you know? The, you know, but, but that's just, you know, and then other years, we're going to, we're going to, maybe they're over, going to overperform, and then we're going to be, we're going to be talking about, it'll be a happy conversation, like, hey, they earned more than they thought, and so it's going to actually drop our balance now. Because the unfunded actual, it's just, it's a projected future cost, right? It's not your actual cost this year.
Right.
So.
And we have to make them whole, unfortunately, so they can win and they can lose, but if, when they lose, they go back to the cities to say, oh, sorry, we thought we were going to make, they're typically been at seven, oh, well, we only made four, so we have to make up that difference.
Yeah, no, I get that. I was just actually sort of along the lines of what you were saying about having something be a little more, you know, something you can project and expect. And I understand why that's not, you know, as much as I, we might like that to happen, that we don't have control over that. I do understand that. I was just clarifying how that works, so thank you.
So, any other questions on this? Seeing none, then, let's see, do we want to adopt a resolution for this budget? Does someone want to perform that? No, we're not going to get an AD. Oh, well, here, I mean, I think this works.
I moved that we adopt a resolution approving the City of Cattati budget for fiscal year 202324.
Nicely done. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Angela. Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the beautiful budget.
Yeah, I just, I would just want to say quickly, this, this is not, you know, you made it really super clear, and thank you. That is not something that's very easy to do, so thank you.
Okay, so Damian, are we on to you?
Yeah, you ready for some fun?
So. All right, let's have some fun.
Yeah, so Cattati Park, that is almost ready to go at the end of the month.
Hey.
Minus the restroom. The restroom will come the week of July 10th, but everything else should be ready and open to the public by the end of the month. So just on that, on that note, we're going to be setting up a ribbon-cutting event sometime after the restroom gets set, so we'll be reaching out soon and trying to get a date on your calendars. So there is some roadwork going on. You guys might have seen it around town. This project in front of City Hall is, they're still working on curb ramps, and they're going to transition to, once they're done with that, they're going to transition to paving work, end of the month, early June, somewhere in that timeframe. So that's going to be going here shortly. But that's a more grind and mill pave over, like, so it's not like what you see over at Myrtle where they're, you see a bunch of dirt roads over there. That's a complete reconstruction. So that one is, that one's going along well as well. So they're just adding, they've ground the, ground the asphalt and the base rock and then some subsoil into the, they ground it up in place, and then they're going to add cement to it, which they're doing now, and then they're going to compact it for paving. So it'll be a much nicer road over there. Paving, or I'm sorry, painting, we are, we've been doing pressure washing and priming, so that's going on right now. The painting's going to be going into, I think, June, June 9th or so? June 9th? The actual painting, yeah. So careful where you park your car next to City Hall those days, if you want it to stay the color it is. Or, anyway, we're trying to make sure that it's clear to people not to park next to the City Hall, but that's, there's going to be painting going on. And then as far as projects go, that's it. Just on some recreation stuff, on May 12th, we had our last spring free youth day at Ronda Fleddy Ranch, and had about 50 people there, and it was a Mother's Day theme, and kids got to make a gift and take it home for someone they love, presumably their mother, or someone that is their, I don't know, acts as their mother at home. And it's been very popular, so it's, we're taking a break. It's been very popular, so it's great. We're taking a break during the summer events, but then we're going to be back in the fall with more of those. This Saturday on May 27th, we have our first free rainwater capture workshop hosted by Farmster, and that's 10 a.m. to noon, and how you can learn how to design your own rainwater capture system for your home, and RSVPs are highly encouraged for that, so they know how many people are planning to attend. Farmers Market's going to be back in La Plaza Park starting June 7th, every Wednesday, from June through the end of September, and it's 4:30 to 7:30. And all the normal great stuff with the Farmers Market. On June 9th, we have our second annual Cattati Car Show in La Plaza Park, followed by the first movie in the park, which is going to be Grease, appropriately. That's, the car show is 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the movie starts around 8:30 p.m. that night. We're going to have food and drinks and everything like that there for the family. And as a sort of a side note, the shopping center across the street where Flagship Taproom is, is supposed to be getting their power turned on by the end of this month.
Yay, finally.
Yeah, so they're going to have a, they're going to have a lights-on party right around the same time. We're working with them on that right now. And then there's many other things coming up, the Cattati Music Fest, Kids' Day, and more, and you can learn all about it on our social media and our webpage. That is it for tonight. Thank you.
All right, any questions? No? Okay, then we can move on to city council member reports.
Let's report briefly, the Russian River Water Set Association Board is having its, I think, 20th anniversary, does that sound right? Board meeting on June 1st in the morning at the Laguna Foundation, should be a good time. But at the same time, the Sonoma Clean Power Board is meeting, so Councilmember Lemus is going to, as the alternate on Sonoma Clean Power, is going to represent us at that, the Sonoma Clean Power meeting.
Sylvia? Sylvia, do you have a report? Oh, jeez. Oh my God, it's getting so late. I'm sorry. K, oh, jeez. So sorry. Sorry, Sylvia. You both have Brett on.
Well, we're both new, so, you know, it's okay. Yeah, so the main thing I just wanted to share was the, I, and I, I'll be super brief because I did kind of talk about it already. I did go over to Rancho Cattati High School. I was very excited because in Santa Rosa, we had a random day off for emergency, you know, which we didn't need to use, and so we got to have the day off, so I got to go because my, my days off are their days off, so I never got to go. So anyway, it just so happened that it was the day that the genders and sexualities met, the GSA met, so I got to meet those kids, which was really cool, and go and see the Continuation High School, like the one I teach at, which was really cool. And unfortunately, our education committee was canceled, so we didn't get to go to that. But, yeah, I'm looking forward to gathering folks for our flag raising ceremonies next month. So let me just say, if there's anyone actually listening to this in the future, and you are a member of the LGBTQ plus community, and/or are a member of our Black community who would like to speak at either of our flag raising events, I would very much love to hear from you. Thanks.
Laura?
Oh, it's you. Sorry, nothing to report.
Sylvia? No, I think I got her name right. Okay. I just have a couple. I attended the Marin Sonoma mosquito vector control and got to hear all about their developing their budget and all of that, and boy, they had a lot of details about what those folks do. Some of it went like right over my head, I'll eventually get it, so that was a pretty good meeting. And then I attended the Zero Waste Sonoma meeting, and the only thing of note that we approved one, one contract for an extension on the household hazardous waste, but one good thing that we did find out is the CRV that has been gone for God knows how long is now back, it's over in Marnet Park. The best way for me to describe it is, anybody knows where Baskin Robbins or 24 Hour Health Club, it's in that parking lot right there. So we have that back, so that's great for Cattati and Marnet Park to finally have that back. I know a lot of people missed being able to, to get their CRV stuff, so that is all I have. And so we will move on to public comment on non-action items, and there's no one in the chambers, and.
And Mayor Harvey, still the same story on Zoom, no attendees, so no public comment.
Okay, well, yes, it is getting quite late. So with that, we will be going into closed session, and the item is a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property is 147 St. Joseph's Way in Cattati. The city negotiator, city manager, negotiating party, Cattati Hotel LLC, under negotiation terms of payment of the sale of the property. So we'll be back. So we'll be back.
Oh, yes, we have another item here. We have information received after the agenda was posted.
So there were several items. A couple of them were updates to the resolution for Neil Hancock and some of the budget packets. There were also the water fund additions that Angela mentioned, as well as four public comments around the flying of the pride flag.
All right, thank you for that. And then with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 10:18. Thank you.
In all those places? Because that went by really fast. I've got two comments. One is, I go up and down Page Street probably twice a day in my car. We do not need a speed bump. And it will be very annoying to have a speed bump there. And probably what will mean is that I will go over to Redwood Highway to go down there through the downtown area rather than going on Page to West Sierra to the stop sign. And that doesn't seem like a good idea to me. The other thing I want to talk about is the problem with the Mobile Home Park on West Sierra. This is really, really dangerous. People who live in that Mobile Home Park, a lot of them are elderly. They don't really go very well. If we wait two years and then we study it, what you're going to find is on one side, there's a, across from the Mobile Home Park, there's a sidewalk. But you can't get there without crossing the street, the traffic that comes from the freeway. And it's fast traffic and they're not paying attention. On the other side, there is, I guess it's a creek, but it looks like a kind of gully. And it has old eucalyptus trees on it. So it's not going to be an easy place to put a sidewalk. I would really, really recommend that you take some of the money to doing some of the other crosswalks and get a crosswalk down there with one of those flashing light like we have on East Katati at Arthur Street. I think it's, I mean, this is just an accident waiting to happen. And I believe we've had an accident there that didn't kill anybody, but it could easily happen. So thanks for the time and attention, all of you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other discussions or comments on the commission? No?
Oh, Chair Savage, the Zoom.
Oh, there is someone on the Zoom.
There is someone on Zoom.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
All right, speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to pick up, make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or if you are dialing in, dial star nine. Chair Savage, that'll end public comment.
Thank you.
So Cypress repaving, that's still in the design phase. The other ones are past the design phase though?
Yeah, the other, I think all other projects are in construction. I know the downtown connectivity project is, and I believe the other one, the 2023 is, yeah.
So there wouldn't necessarily be opportunity to add some of these other, you know, crosswalks or other features that have been discussed?
Correct, yeah. We have a, the opportunity is on the Redwood Drive Cypress Avenue project.
Do you know what Eris spoke about, about the city being able to lower the speed limit?
Yeah, there, yeah, so it, so the speed limit law will be changing. I don't know that it's officially changed yet. But yes, what, the comment that was made, yes, the speed law, speed law setting is changing. And it won't be necessarily using the 85th percentile.
Yeah, I was going to add to that. It takes a while to, for the law to be implemented. For example, Caltrans is developing the standards by which we would all have to follow to, to implement it. One of the immediate changes that we were able to apply was to extend our, the speed, the, the life of the speed survey that we had done. It usually expires after seven years. And we were able to extend that to 14 years. And then the other aspects of the law would allow us to, I think, create a, a safety zone. And it couldn't be more than 10% of the city that we could, that would designate within a safety zone. And within that, within that safety zone, we could reduce the speed limit by 10 miles per hour. So from whatever that 85th percentile sets it at, we could lower it, I believe, by 10. So it's, we still, we still are limited to what we can do. And it is taking time.
Well, it would seem to me that Cypress would be one of the streets. Maybe Water Road would be another one where, where there are no sidewalks, where there maybe never will be a sidewalk. And just slowing the traffic down may be perfect for, I don't know any other street in the city that seems to have that kind of traffic. I don't know. And, and, and as to what Eris said about the, the, the paths where the bikes are, can we, it's true. They're in pretty poor condition. So what about getting any pavement done there?
I think as, as part of our strategic planning this year, that was voiced, that was communicated to staff. And so we have a capital project for the Laguna pathway from East Katati Avenue, I think at least to Gravinstein Way to improve it. And we're looking to assess our class one pathways similar to how we do it with the pavement management program. It would have to be a separate program. And they, they do not degrade as quickly as the roadways. But I think they would benefit from a systematic analysis like that. So those are two, two ways that.